We continue from our work session to this regular board, to this workshop business meeting. Is there a motion for the approval of our agenda?
I'll move approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. Second. Mr. McGlade, any discussion? Hearing none, we have a resolution to approve our agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, and the motion has carried. Now we have a motion for the resolu- for the approval of our minutes of the closed session of June 18th, as well as our workshop business meeting of June 23rd. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of minutes from the closed session of June 18th, 2020, and the workshop business meeting of June 23rd, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Argless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes for the closed session of June 18th and the workshop business meeting of June 23rd signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, opposed, same sign, and the motion carries. This is a time in our meeting where it's an opportunity for the members of our public to address the board regarding regular business, regarding agenda items, as well as other matters of concern. Mr. Wilson indicated that we did not have anybody call in or write in ahead of time, so now is the time to ask, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the board at this time? We have one, okay? We have Ms. Anderson. Now is the time and place to approach the podium.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi.
I wanted to talk about social distancing in the classroom at this time, because I know we're going to talk about our return to learn plan. And you received an email from CBCSD about some of our concerns for return to learn. And I'm looking at this hall, and I see the social distancing, and looking at my numbers as a sixth grade math teacher, there's no possible way for me to have social distancing at this, at this level. And if we need to have social distancing, and we need to have masks, and we need to be able to sanitize and clean our classrooms, I think I can do two of those three things. I don't know if it's a reasonable thing to ask staff and students and their families to be put at risk when we can't do three out of the three things that we need to do. And it's hard for me to stand up here and talk, but I, I feel strongly about keeping all of us safe. And I love my job, I love teaching, and I firmly believe the best way to do it is face-to-face. But if we can't do it safely with a full classroom, probably we should think about half of the kids at a time, or even online. Because if safety truly is the very most important thing, having a full class, I looked at my numbers, I've got 26, 28, 24, and 31 in my classroom. This is not possible. Please consider the hybrid model if it's at all possible at this time. Thanks.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one moving to the podium, we will move forward with our agenda then, which is our superintendent's report. In that, we have informational presentations, the return to operations plan, and also childcare summary. Dr. Marilla, would you please lead us in this portion of the meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cozire. As I begin, Ms. Ostrowski's going to make her way to the podium, but before we begin to present the return to learn plan this evening, I first want to thank the team of leaders in our district that did this work. They worked really hard to pull together the plan that you will see this evening. But I also want to thank our teachers and our administrators that provided feedback and helped us as we navigated through the course to pull together our return to learn plan. We had some priorities that guided us through this process, and if Ms. Ostrowski will put that up for me. It was really important that we ensured the health and safety of students and staff, was one key area, equipping our staff and students and parents with the tools that they need to navigate in-school and at-home learning, that we maintained the continuity of our instruction and our pacing of the curriculum, and we provided a safe, caring, and respectful school environment as our students returned, and the most importantly, that we remained flexible to adjust as necessary. I want the family and community members to know that with the governor's proclamation, we have been directed to open schools. But at this time, if the board approves our return to learn plan this evening, it is my intent to recommend that we begin in the hybrid plan. I am bringing forth this at the beginning of the presentation, because as we present tonight, I want to give an opportunity for our parents, our teachers, and our family members, our community members here in Council Bluffs, to be able to watch now the presentation and really learn as much as they can about the hybrid plan. We know that there will be many more questions, and on August the 11th, we can circle back again and do another presentation on any feedback that we receive or questions that we might have. It is critical to us that we provide a safe environment, and we do agree that the hybrid, even though we will work together with our community and our families to find alternative ways for daycare that they will have, that Mr. Schultz will bring forward later at the ending of this presentation. But we want to thank the families and our, our parents for their feedback in the survey. Ms. Ostrowski's going to show you pretty soon about how many that we had. I believe we had about a little over 1,700 families provide feedback in that survey. And we were really impressed by the way that the families gave us the feedback on our questions that we asked, and Ms. Ostrowski will talk about an FAQ that we published. I also want to publicly thank the staff of our district for providing feedback and answering our survey and giving us insight to any concerns that they may have. So Ms. Ostrowski, I'll turn it over this time.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are very pleased, as we, as we typically do, we, we benefit from the feedback and input from all of our stakeholders. We took the time to ask, as Dr. Marilla said, for feedback from our communities, and one of the things that we asked, really the only yes or no, or agree or disagree question we asked, was around that important and critical discussion around face coverings. I have mine off today so that I can enunciate and communicate effectively, and we are socially distant, so if anybody has any objections, I'd be glad to put that back on. We asked these very words, our proposal from Dr. Marilla, was that students and staff be expected to wear their face coverings whenever it is not possible to be socially distant. This could, you know, obviously include times when we're going from class to class, arriving at school, and we, we feel that it's best that we expect that and teach that as the, as the norm. Students and staff members are encouraged to wear their mask at all times, but may have opportunities through the day to have a break, say at recess, when they're not near another child and could really use an opportunity to not have their masks. Parents, to a, to a 59.2% said they agreed with this proposal. And a larger majority of staff also agreed with this proposal at nearly 78%. So that is what you see in the return to operations manual as the expectation and the encouragement. We're very interested in hearing all of the free-form answers, and there, there were, you know, 1,700, but they were worth going through, but I found some themes that I think that won't surprise you. Mostly, it's the fear of, of being a victim of the virus, of catching the virus at school, and of bringing it home to our loved ones. There were specific health concerns of students and their families mentioned, and we absolutely are aware of that and want to be sensitive to that and protect children from the virus. We have a need for childcare in our community. That came through loud and clear. If we're not in school every day, what's a family who has working parents to do? And so, part of what we've provided in terms of the FAQ and the response and the manual is some of the responses and solutions potentially for these. The fear of masks, the fear that masks won't be worn. We encourage it, we expect it, but what if kids aren't wearing it? How will that disrupt and then jeopardize what we're all trying to accomplish, and that is to stop the spread? And then finally, like that, hesitation about having their children, their own personal children in masks all day, and wondering what that will do. And so those are real concerns, they're valid. I, I believe that in our plan, we have addressed some of these fears and concerns, and will absolutely work directly with parents and children about their concerns and about their special needs. We are about individualizing education as best we can, and we'll do so for the accommodations related to these safety measures as well. Wanted to share with you, because one of the, one of the other questions that we've received is, how will I know if my child has been exposed? Or how, as a staff member, will I know if there's a child or another staff member with whom I've been associating? How will I know if I'm potentially at risk? And what we promise to you is that we will prepare messages that can be sent directly to audiences that are affected. We're not going to publish them out on Facebook every time, but what we want to do is make sure those who are directly involved have the opportunity to know that information so that they can take the proper action. We will use general statements, and I know people will say, well, I don't just want a generic statement, I want to know how directly I was involved. Well, we have an obligation to protect privacy rights of students and of staff, and we will continue to do that, and we'll promise to do that. And again, we'll do that messaging in a timely manner in the most appropriate and direct means we can. When we, when we talk about changes in the learning phases, because you know, as Dr. Marilla said, recommending to start in hybrid, if there comes a time we, we're able to go back to full onsite, that's good, you know, wishful thinking, and I know it'll happen at some point, or we need to go to fully remote for a massive second wave, we will also promise to message to all those involved that we're going to provide that timeline for that change to occur so that we can all do our planning together. And we will make sure and remind our parents that it's very important, this year more than ever, to make sure your contact information is up to date, your email and your phone, so that we can connect with you directly and in a timely manner. Dr. Marilla? At this time, I will invite our chief academic officer, Dr. Corey Vorthman, to talk about those phases that we may go in and out of, and provide you more detail about that. Dr. Vorthman? I'm hitting the thing, so I'm wiping it off.
Thank you. Well, as Ms. Ostrowski said, we have developed, as part of our return to learn plan, three different phases that we may use throughout the course of the school year. And just to refresh some of the information that I provided at the June board meeting, those three phases are remote, where all students are attending instruction from their homes, with instruction provided by our teachers. A hybrid plan, which Dr. Marilla mentioned tonight that we wanted to kind of hone in on, so I'll tailor this a little bit more closely to the hybrid plan. This is where students, about half of them, will attend face-to-face every other day of instruction, and I'll go into some detail on that. And then lastly, onsite, where all students return to what we typically know as school. So I'm going to focus most on the hybrid plan tonight, because I think it's where most of our thoughts are and where we're focusing most of our energies. But I will point out that planned movement has changed, taken a little bit different course of events over the past month. And as Dr. Marilla mentioned early in her comments, the remote plan is no longer able to be utilized by school districts unilaterally. It requires specific permission from both the Department of Education and approval by local health, public health department, and state health department before it can even be considered as an option. The hybrid plan allows us to put 50% of our students in school buildings physically, as long as they are receiving 50% of their instruction in face-to-face. And so in order for us to meet that requirement, we did go back and make a few tweaks to our hybrid plan that was presented in June. Namely, you will notice that in our daily schedule, students will be divided into two groups, group one and group two, about half each, according to their last name alphabetically. Obviously, there are some exceptions and considerations that are made at the individual building levels to keep families on the same schedule, or maybe even to accommodate individual needs within a building for individual days. But primarily speaking, students will be convened in two groups. Group one will attend on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Group two attends face-to-face on Wednesday and Fridays. And then every other Monday, group one and two alternates face-to-face. So that in a given two-week period of instruction, all students receive five days of face-to-face instruction and five days of learning from home. Student attendance is required in the hybrid model, as well as the onsite model and the remote model. And what makes the hybrid plan and the remote plan different from what students experienced in the spring is all of their work is required, it is all graded, and it is all necessary in order for them to move to the next grade level or to obtain credit at high school towards graduation. In our onsite and our hybrid models, students will attend onsite, and our staff members will report onsite to provide instruction, because they will have students in front of them, both behind the screen at home and in their own classrooms. And we'll provide a lot of additional information tonight on mitigation efforts that will be employed as part of the hybrid model as we move forward. So to get into those a little bit, Mr. Gary Milborn will provide some information on risk mitigation and health and environment.
Good evening.
A key component of our return to learn plan is having an operation manual that has clear processes and has a friendly language that our employees can understand and help them navigate situations. One of our key strategies is risk mitigation, and there's many strategies that go into that are vital to keeping our students and staff safe. I'm going to review these in a very kind of overview, large view, and then Travis Martin from Facilities, Lisa Stewart from Nutrition will speak specifically about that. And then Tim Hamilton will talk about transportation later on, and Mark and Julie will talk about how that looks in the buildings as well. So I'm speaking in, in general terms here. One key strategy here is staying home when you're sick, that stops spreading the virus. And so what we're implementing is our HealthCheck 360 daily symptoms survey tracker for our employees. The board approved this before, and the purpose of this is really to prevent sick employees from reporting to work, limit exposure and spread. We have a dashboard, we could identify certain locations if there's outbreaks in certain departments and our locations, and then limit our building access. The survey is very simple. We've been doing the survey at ESC since July 6th, and it takes under 60 seconds. You either get a text or an email based on your preference. You ask them questions, do you have new muscle aches, do you have a headache, do you have a fever? What is your temperature? You fill it out, you submit it. You either get a green light or a red light to report to work, or a red light to not report to work, a green light to report to work. That red light comes with instructions immediately for the employee. So it says, enter your absence, so we can get a sub if needed, contact your primary healthcare provider for next steps, communicate with your supervisor. And then a nice piece that we've also purchased in this is the care management support. So after an employee has contacted their healthcare provider, later on that day, a nurse from 360 will call and say, how did the appointment go? Were there any questions that weren't answered in your appointment? How can I help you in making decisions in conjunction with your doctor's orders or healthcare orders in returning back to work? So it's a, it's a really nice supportive piece through that. And then number five is also converse with HR to explore leave options. That, the first thing we want to do is get a substitute, get classrooms covered, and get the leave in, and then we will be step-by-step right there with employees to figure out, do we need to change the leave and, and figure it out later for the best, for their situation? So we are going to talk once again, as I mentioned before, just in general terms about social distancing, facilities and nutrition, and Mr. Hamilton will talk about what that looks like at the building levels and transportation. But we know we're going to try to social distance to the greatest extent possible. Hybrid is going to help us do that much more effectively. We're also going to put up barriers where employees may need to interact with visitors on a regular basis, and our custodial staff has been working on demarcating the buildings with traffic flows and, and trying to limit any possibility of getting under six feet. That's our key, that's our key indicator there is try to stay six feet away. So that is our social distancing efforts. We know that we won't always be six feet away from each other, kids are going to pass each other, we're going to do those things, but the buildings, Mark and Julie will really talk about how we're going to operationalize that in the buildings, and here's some of the categories that they are working with principals, and obviously we'll be getting teachers and staff input on how to implement this as well. We know face coverings are important, as the survey said. We have some support on this, and, and students are, and employees are expected to wear those when social distancing cannot be done, and it's highly, highly encouraged that they're worn on the premises at all times. The district has purchased cloth, purchased cloth masks for all students and staff, and they've also purchased disposable masks for all students and staff in case those cloth masks get left in the car, or left at home, or if one becomes soiled or destroyed. So that is our plan with face coverings. And we are following the CDC guidance, and we will be pushing out reminders and providing signage as well around how to kind of don and doff masks, when you should launder them, just kind of that mask maintenance, which is a new thing in our world. Another strategy we will be using will be limiting the building access. The goal here is we're screening our employees, we really want to keep as many people out of the building as possible so we can contact trace and so we can limit exposure. So volunteers will be prohibited, non-essential visitors will be prohibited. Each site will set up a contactless drop zone, and then only essential vendors and contractors will have access to the buildings, you know, HVAC or electricians and things like that, and they will come to the office and be asked a set of screening questions. Have you had symptoms? Have you had exposure? Are you in the same household, someone under investigation, those things? They will receive a badge that says screen, they'll be required to wear a mask, and they can only go to their designated areas. And then we will be promoting hand hygiene like crazy this year. And the facilities team have done a really great job of like procuring mobile and touchless hand stations to facilitate that, and I'm going to turn it over to Travis Martin to talk about what some of these strategies will look like from the facilities point of view.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. This is my first time in front of you, so, thank you. As we prepare for the new school year, we realize that this year's not going to look like anything we've seen before. The number of questions and uncertainty leads to a certain amount of fear and anxiety in people. You know, they're wondering, how are we going to maintain a safe, clean environment for the students and the teachers? You know, and as a parent of a second-grade student, I can certainly empathize with those feelings. So tonight, I'd like to share a few slides with you that outline some of the things our facilities, maintenance, and custodial crews have worked on this summer to help us try to mitigate some of the issues that may be out there, or some of the concerns that may be out there. So maintaining a clean and safe environment, we've really worked on a comprehensive cleaning plan, and what that means is we've looked at all of our schedules, we've had to reevaluate start, stop times of our teams, we may have had to shift teams around to make sure we have the right workers in the right place at the right time. We've looked at maybe moving people from school to school to try and balance some things out, and we understand that that's a work in progress. You know, there's new guidelines coming out all the time, so we will remain nimble and able to react and move as necessary. So primarily, our day shift custodians' responsibilities are to help facilitate the lunch programs, they're going to be there to touch all the high-touch point areas and keep them sanitized throughout the day, make sure all of our supplies remain stocked and in stock and available to the students and the teachers. And then our nighttime crews, they will come in after the business hours, they'll be there to do the deep cleans of the building, they're going to do the disinfecting, the heavy cleaning at night to make sure that the buildings are ready and ready for the students and teachers to arrive the next day. The next thing we looked at was our equipment. We have in the district a Victory Sprayer, and I'm sure you've heard of these before, they're electrostatic sprayers. So it discharges the product out of the sprayer with an electrostatic charge, so when that hits the, the leg of a chair, it may hit the front side, but then it will travel around and encapsulate that whole leg. So this type of technology allows us to move more quickly through the schools, allows us to cover more square footage. So at the end of the school year, on March 17th, when we left for the year, we had nine handheld units in the district. And through, you know, the support of our administrative team and the board, we were able to procure more. We now have 19 handheld units and four backpacks in the district. We have eight more units on order that we anticipate to be here before the start of the year, five more handheld units and three more backpacks. That's a total of 31 Victory Sprayers in the district. These are very hard to come by now, we were lucky we got our orders in early. It's a very valuable piece of equipment that really helps the cleaning process, so we're very fortunate. We'll be utilizing spray bottles throughout the district. We've tried and will continue to try to coordinate the coloring of the triggers, so we're using primarily yellow triggers for our disinfectants and red triggers for our sanitizers. So we can delineate which ones are which. Obviously, there will be the proper labeling on there, so this is just a quick reference to see which one they're grabbing. So we have, in the district, right now, we have 1,400 spray bottles on hand, we have 800 on backorder that we anticipate to be here before the end of the school, or before the start of the school year. So our plan is to have one of those in each classroom and available to the teachers. So we're not trying to ask the teachers to do the custodial job by sanitizing the room. We simply want to make sure that the bottles are there and the product is available if they want to supplement doing some cleaning, you know, throughout the day, if there's some high-touch areas that they feel concerned with. So our, our goal and our intent is to make sure that they have the product available to use. And it's much like when you go to the Hy-Vee, you see the, the spray bottles now that you can spray down and wipe as you go, so. Training, training's a big focus for us this year. Starting August the 4th, which is next Tuesday, we have Egan Supply coming in to do the training with all of our custodial staff on the Victory Sprayers. We've got a lot more sprayers this year, so we're investing in the education to make sure that everybody knows how to use those sprayers. Some different sanitizers being used at different levels within the, the district, so we're going to make sure everybody understands what chemicals are being used, we're going to make sure everybody understands what PPE they need to be used. We want to fully equip our staff with all the knowledge they need to do a successful job. Communication, communication will be key this year, probably more than ever, and that communication, I mean, is between the custodial staff, the principals in the schools, the teachers in the schools. They're really going to have to be a collaborative effort and a constant communication of give and take, where we might need to focus on different areas. So our, our custodial staff needs to be intimately involved with the teachers that they cover their rooms so they know, was there an incident in this area, or do I need to focus more attention in this area? So we're really striving for the communication to develop and make a real collaborative team effort for them. And then our support of extracurricular activities, some of the Victory Sprayers that are on backorder that will be here before the start of the school or to help with our sports programs, there's a lot of regulations involved with the sports programs of cleaning and sanitizing the equipment, so we want to make sure they have that equipment. We do supplement the ADs with our, our spray bottles, they do have a form that they order, they get their sanitizer through the city of Council Bluffs, but we do supply the spray bottles for them. Next, we've really focused on trying to create as much of a touchless environment in the schools as we can. We're trying to get rid of all the areas where there's heavy touch points. So tonight, on the board agenda, we're asking for approval to buy automatic towel dispensers, and there's quite a few, several hundred on the order. We want to replace the towel dispensers throughout the district at all the hand washing sinks and the restrooms, where there's old crank style of hand, hand- and the restrooms where there's old crank style of hands. So we want the hands-free, where you wave your hand, paper towel dispensers. Bottle filling stations, we realize that the water fountains are a point of possible cross-contamination, so we are disabling the water fountains in the schools. We've purchased twenty-one new, twenty-one new bottle filling stations. So those we put out through all the schools, several of the schools already have them, but we want to make sure that every school has one on at least every floor in the school. Boaming hand sanitizing stations, we bought two hundred of the hands-free bulk sanitizing stations. There'll be a minimum of ten in each school. Those will be a combination of wall-mounted and then mobile-mounted on the stands. So the wall-mounted will be focused at our high-traffic areas, probably the entry points to the school, the entry points to the cafeterias and such. The others will be mounted on the stands and can be moved around throughout the school depending on the traffic flow patterns and stuff. And then motion sensor faucets, you know, that's not something that we're going to be able to implement throughout the district overnight, but it's a goal that we're working towards to try to make everything sensor-activated, so we're not touching faucets, turning things off and on. Next, there's our physical safety barriers that we've been working on. You see some of them in front of you tonight. These are some that we purchased from a local vendor, that these are placed on every nurse's desk in the district. We have some of these smaller ones at the entry points of all the schools, the administrative desks. We also have some large, five-foot-wide ones at those areas. So, you know, those are throughout the district in all the locations. Pre-K and kindergarten rooms, our FMCS crew has devised some homemade type of stands that will help partition the desks in the small kids' rooms. There'll be plastic that will separate them, but they will still be able to see each other. There won't be any, you know, obscurity where they cannot see their neighbors, so those still have perfect sight lines. At the elementary and middle schools, we've come up with a system where we have a pole on each side of the table, and we're using two-foot-wide stretch wrap that you typically wrap around pallets. It'll start on a spool on one side, pull across the table, and it rolls up on the other side, much like a filter system, a continuous filter system and an air handler. So when the kids are sitting there, they'll be separated by that plastic barrier, they'll still be able to see each other and still, you know, have that sight of one another. Once they get up and leave, we'll be able to roll that across, there's a fresh set of plastic in front of the next people that sit down. At the end of the day, custodian will cut the plastic, roll it up, set the two poles off to the side. Directional arrows and signage. Our custodial staff will be working with the principals when they return to the schools next week to identify pathways through the school. We're going to really work on trying to have one-way pathways, so eliminate as much cross-traffic as we can. There'll also be some dots that signify the six-foot separation to give the kids some visualization of what six feet is, and we'll have plenty of signage that reinforces the need for six-foot separation. That'll be inside the buildings and outside the buildings. And everything we've talked to, to this point, has been about cleaning and tactile touch surfaces, so the next level that we want to take it is, what are some things that we can do to help purify the air? So how can we reduce the pollutants and the germs and the things that are floating around in the air? The simplest thing that we can do immediately is reevaluate our frequency for changing our filters. So we're going to work on that, you know, we've already started that this week. We're going to work with our HVAC vendors to see how far up we can take our MERV ratings on our filters. Currently, we have MERV eight filters in the district. You get up to MERV thirteen, you're able to trap some of the smaller germs and things that are in the air. You can't just put that in, though, you don't want to starve your system, so we've got to work with our vendors to make sure that our equipment is still able to supply the right amount of air. And then finally, there are systems out there that you can place in the ductwork, such as UV. There's two or three different types of systems that are out there. We want to look at that as a long-range strategy for the district. What can we do in the ducts that will eliminate the number of pollutants and germs in the So with that, I would turn it over to you for questions.
For the classroom spray bottles, will teachers have gloves available to use the product so they're not coming in contact with the solution?
Absolutely. If there's any type of PPE that's required for that, we'll make sure that they have that.
Those, the electrostatic sprayers, will those be used nightly, or just is there a schedule to use those in the building?
No, we would anticipate that they'll be used every night, yeah. Possibly throughout the day. We're just, it's going to be a nimble, we're going to have to fluctuate and see. You know, we have the best-laid plans, but until we get in there and actually do this for a couple days when school starts, if the day shift custodian has time to use the Victory Sprayer, absolutely, he would have that at his use to be able to use. We just don't know what those workloads are going to be like until we've actually encountered it for a few days.
Thank you.
Have we repaired, I'm assuming, the non-working hand washing stations that are in the, are replacing, I know there were some at some of the high schools, where they just, one was functional, the others weren't?
To the best of my knowledge, if there's any work orders, we now employ a plumber for the district, and I know he's been very busy working on that type of stuff. If there are some that are out there that I'm unaware of, we need to, please make us aware of those, and we'll get work orders assigned and get it taken care of.
Yeah, and Travis, one of the things, Mr. Arthur, that we were afforded with the closing is, we had almost five hundred work orders that hadn't been met, and because of the closing, Travis, really working with Aaron and Raymond, created a plan where they just attacked those work orders and just kept going at them. And you got them down to how many now?
We were down at some point, just shy of a hundred, that were still hanging out there within the district. As our projects have picked up, they've kind of built back up some, but our focus has always remained on being customer service-oriented to the people that put the work orders in. So our goal is to always respond to those and stay on top of those. The work order wouldn't have been put in if it wasn't a priority for somebody.
And I'd also like to really give a shout-out to, I met with Travis, Aaron, and Raymond, and shared my vision of trying to put some protective barriers for our children, because I know face masks for pre-K and kindergarten are really going to be tough to keep those on. So they, because of the cost to purchase these, they created and built a model like this that we will be able to use in the smaller, and they shrunk it down to fit those table sizes. And then when I talked about being able to create a barrier down a lunchroom table, and I went in and saw that they had created this wrap, and how they could just turn it, mark it, after the next lunch shift, they turn it and mark it again, turn it, and then slice it down, and just protecting our kids and being able to do that each time is amazing. I told them they needed to patent that, because that is the quickest way for us to be able to not have to break everything down, but then we have to always put up our lunch tables because we use that for our PE classrooms. So I was really appreciative of the focus, because every now pre-K and kindergarten classroom will have those additional barriers, especially if you have a student that really struggles to keep this on, as you continue to work with them over and over, and I almost say, it's almost going to build that stamina. I can keep it on for thirty minutes, I can't keep it on any longer. Tomorrow, I keep it on for thirty-five, and within a couple of weeks, hopefully, I'm up to lunchtime. Then I get to take it off and eat lunch, and then I put it back on. So that's our goal in teaching, how important it is to wear a mask.
I would be remiss if I didn't publicly thank my custodial staff for the outstanding work they've done this summer. While everybody was social distancing and working from home, they were still in the school districts doing the job. So that really gave us the opportunity to do some deep, deep cleaning of the schools and get ahead of the curve as we prepare to go back to school this year. Our facilities and maintenance staff have been working non-stop on welding the poles together for the stretch wrap that we're talking about. You know, there's several hundred poles that will have to be welded together and developed. We have approximately eleven or twelve tables at all of the elementary schools. There's eleven there, so you can do the math, one on each end of the table. So they're working non-stop to try to get this stuff in place for us, and they're doing an outstanding job. So I'm very fortunate to have the team that I have and the leadership through Aaron Rang and Raymond Chase. They're doing an outstanding job.
Any other questions from board members?
Great job, thank you.
One, I do have one question. When we start looking at isolation rooms for suspected individuals or individuals who are suspected of having contracted the virus, one of the seminars that, or one of the webinars that I attended talked about the importance of our nursing suites, and that we need to make sure that our nursing suites are actually not a point of distribution of the virus. So when we look at our nursing suites, they talked about the importance of having, as you know, you're familiar with the mechanical systems, we need to make sure that our isolation rooms are at a negative pressure with respect to the rest of the space, and also making sure that the mechanical system is, does not communicate with the rest of the building. So that's my main concern when we look at our isolation spaces, that they are hardened and that we have our architects and our engineers and our mechanical contractors evaluate those spaces so that we can make sure that they are the safest places that we're putting those students and not allowing that to get into the rest of the building. So I know you're working very diligently, but that's one of the important things that I wanted to discuss, is that we need to make sure our spaces aren't making the rest of the building sick.
And I absolutely agree with your comments, and that's something that we'll work for to doing. It looks like we're going to be adjusting to a new normal that we have here, and very much, I came from healthcare sector fifteen years as a director of facilities prior to coming here, so you're talking very much like a tuberculosis isolation room, where you have negative air pressure, where we can isolate the ductwork so it doesn't feed back into the rest of the building. So very familiar with that, and that's something that we can work with our HVAC vendors on.
Yeah, good. Chris, it looks like, yes, Chris, we can...
I did have a couple of questions without the return to the learned plan. First, I guess, is there going to be guidance for parents when we're learning remotely? You know, the experience that I had in two months in the school year, you know, as a parent, it was difficult. It would have been sort of a, this is what your child should have accomplished today, and this is how you can verify that those things were done, or, you know, some other guidance for parents. I'm very concerned about children who are neglected or abused, and, you know, is this a safe place in their lives? And when we're in the hybrid or remote plans, you know, are there, are there things that we are going to be doing proactively? You know, and I know that this is, I know that remote learning and the hybrid plan is probably the best thing for all of the people that we serve. Really, an attack on that, on remote learning, but, you know, I'm very concerned about those children who don't have a voice in the boardroom, and also a concern about parents who cannot afford or don't have access to childcare services, and just making sure that those perspectives are also heard at the board table.
Yes, Mr. LaFerla, Mr. Hamilton will talk about the social and emotional learning in a few minutes. Mr. Schultz will address childcare and the partnership that we have with our school foundation. And then Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Borthman will come back again to talk about virtual and remote, or students that are in the hybrid that are not at school and doing it remotely on that every other day. He will address that for us very soon.
Okay, that makes sense. I didn't know if we were finished with this presentation yet or not.
Oh, Mr. LaFerla, we have about sixty-five slides.
If there are no further questions from me, thank you for the opportunity to present, and I'll turn the floor over to my colleague, Ms. Lisa Stewart, Director of Nutrition Services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening.
I would like to just thank Travis and his team for keeping us operational. The custodians and the nutrition services team have been in the buildings, about eighty percent of the buildings, since March seventeenth, and they have worked hand-in-hand with us trying to keep the touch points that we access, the front entryway, our walkways in our restrooms, and keeping those clean for us. So I definitely want to thank Travis for his help with that. The good news is that we're going to keep feeding kids. We are going to stay one-hundred percent CEP across the district this year. That is the right decision to make. I feel like we, as a community, our families probably need it more than ever, and so the good news is that we aren't going to charge anything for our meals for our kids. But it does look different than what we have been doing since March seventeenth. We have to follow not only the state guidelines, but we also have to follow the guidelines of the USDA, and currently, as of today, those programs that we're operating look different than what we've been operating even today in our summer program. So in our hybrid phase, on Mondays, for our kids that are at school on Mondays, those kids are going to get breakfast and lunch on Mondays. If you are not, if you're a two-student on a one-student week, on Mondays only, you will be able to come up and during a designated hour, be able to come up to the building and grab, grab-and-go meals, very similar to what we are doing now. That will be for our Monday plan only. For breakfast, on every day, Monday through Friday, for the students that are there, we're going to be in the cafeteria. We have those barriers that Travis's team is working on. We're going to be as socially distanced as possible. At the elementary and I believe middle school, it's six kids to a table. At the high school, it's three kids to a table, two or three kids to a round table, with overflow going into designated spaces. Lunch will also be in the cafeteria. The thing that I think is most important, though, and a strategy that we really worked hard at, is how do we feed the kids that aren't in school? I feel like we have an obligation to feed those kids. They're in school, and we feed them. We feed them breakfast and lunch every day. What's going to be the easiest to get food to them? As a working parent myself, who isn't in the district, I know it's virtually impossible for me, if my district did this, for me to go every day to pick up food for my children. So I put myself into it, I put my friends into it, I put my colleagues, I put the people that work in my office how difficult it is. And so currently, the plan is to send go-home kits for the kids at the end of the school day. So if you are a Tuesday, Thursday kid, at the end of the day, you are going to get a kit with breakfast and lunch for the next day sent home with you. That prevents kids or parents having to come up to the building on the off day, so it keeps that traffic down out in the parking lots, it keeps people away from the building, it's a little less taxing on my staff trying to run breakfast and lunch, and then outside and run a drive-up, grab-and-go operation. So our Tuesday, Thursday kids are going to get food on, for Wednesdays and Fridays. Wednesdays and Friday students will have meals for Thursday and Saturday, which looks a little bit different. Why not Tuesday? And here's kind of what we, what we were up against. If we did, sent food home on Mondays every other week, those kids that aren't at school on Tuesday would have food, but then the next week, they'd have to wait five whole days before they would have a meal again. So we were trying to make it as simple as possible, but provide those meals so the kids, the parents are going to have to figure out a lunch, a breakfast and lunch if you're a Tuesday home kid, but then there's going to be food there on Saturday for them as a replacement. So families are still getting five days' worth of food throughout the week. Their weekend meals or dollars are just going to have to be spent on Tuesdays and Sundays, if that makes sense. So we have increased cafeteria and kitchen safety measures in addition to what the custodial staff is doing for us. So along with the district, our kitchen staff will be wearing masks during food distribution. Gloves are already part of our standard operating procedure. We will be able to maintain a six-foot social distance when we're prepping food, so whether that means that we take some of our prep surfaces and spread them out more, we're working on movable carts, sometimes it just might not be possible, and at that time, we're going to wear masks and our protective gear. But we feel confident that we're going to be able to, even in the kitchen, maintain those social distancing. We are going to use disposable trays and bags for breakfast and lunch where we can. So not all of our buildings have dishwashers. So the practice prior to right now is that... So the practice prior to right now is that, let's say, a good elementary, Edison. Edison Elementary has 460 kids guessing here. At the end of lunch, all of their dirty trays were packaged up, loaded onto our delivery trucks, and hauled to Thomas Jefferson with their humongous dishwasher and run through in a matter of minutes because Edison does not have a dishwasher. That practice is stopping temporarily for the time being, probably a year at least. We will not be hauling dirty trays that kids have eaten off of from building to building. So we will be using our disposable trays, which we have used at different buildings throughout throughout the time. We will still be using our washable trays at our buildings that have those commercial dishwashers. And we have used disposable silverware and napkins for years, probably over 10 years we've used those disposables. We are providing touchless point of sale, so where you check out as a cashier in the lunch line. All of our students will have a card, go back old school to like lunch cards instead of taking a punch and punching them, they'll be able to scan them at the registers. Their barcode is tied to their name and ID number, which we have to use for claiming purposes. That's how we get reimbursed for the meals. And so all of the cashiers will have those. Those laminated lunch cards will be on a lanyard at the elementary. Those will likely stay in the classroom, so that way we're not having to maneuver those and worry about those coming back. At the high school, middle school and high school, they will stay on them, they can hook them behind their student ID badges at the high school, we feel confident that they could hook them on their backpack. Or the best part about a barcode, they all have smartphones. You take a picture of the barcode, and then you don't even have to have the lanyard, you just scan your barcode on your smartphone because we all know that they have them. So put them to use. If they're going to have them out in the lunch line, they can scan their barcode as they're going through. Food on self-su- self-serve bar. So we operate a system called offer versus serve. Choice is so important when it comes to food. I can serve chicken nuggets all day long, but there's still going to be a kid, that one's a hot dog. If I have a hot dog and chicken nuggets, that provides opportunities for kids to make those choices. And so we still can offer self-serve stations, but things are going to be packaged, and they're going to be labeled in English and Spanish. So before, when a kindergartner or a third grader would come up, they would see a pan of fresh cut peaches or canned peaches, a can a pan of pears, they would get to scoop their own serving. That's gone. They will now have cut pears, cubbed peaches, but they're still going to have the choice because not everybody likes peaches, but I still want them to get that good quality nutrition. I want them to choose the pears. I don't want to take away those choices. We can do that in a safe manner and still have it prepackaged and according to the health department and those guidelines. So what about the kids that are enrolled in Virtual Academy and maybe are remote kids if we went to a remote option? We are prepared to still continue to feed those kids. If we have to go to a remote option, we will operate very similar to what we've been doing for, I lost count of the weeks, I think we're at 23 weeks. I was really good up until just recently, I lost count. So if we went into a remote option, we will operate at the 11 elementary buildings, and then we will operate out of Abraham Lincoln High School. Thomas Jefferson and Kern, with where the cafeterias are located and the parking structure where students park, and there's not a great way to get food from the building safely out to cars like at our elementary buildings. So just like it is now, those buildings will be open for grab and go at whatever site is closest to you. And the only difference being that right now it's open to any child ages 1 to 18. You don't have to be a member or a student of the Council of School District. Once school starts, unless the guidelines change from the USDA, all students will have to give their, and a parent can come pick it up still, but we will have to get the student's name or ID number, and they will have to tell us what school they belong to because we have to identify that tracking system instead of them just coming up and saying, I have three kids. So they will have to be Council of School District students. Virtual Academy challenge that presented itself, we again try to best determine how to service those kids. So our Virtual Academy kids will all be eating or, you know, learning from home. So we are going to go to a Monday distribution with five days' worth of breakfast and lunches for those students. We have operated this manner at Crescent since June 1st. Works great, takes up a lot of refrigeration, but it works great. And the families are very appreciative, don't only have to come to the building one time, they have the entire week. It takes up a lot of their refrigeration space as well. So that is something that they have to know. So we chose pickup buildings for the Virtual Academy kids, for buildings that have the walk-in cooler space at the buildings. So there'll be Carter Lake Elementary, Roosevelt Elementary, actually, there's a third one, I didn't even remember, College View Elementary, so it'll be three elementaries. And then Kern Middle School, Abraham Lincoln, and Thomas Jefferson will be our grab-and-go locations. So those students will sign up for a meal pickup. They'll do that utilizing Google Forms. It'll probably have to be to us by Friday at 9:00 a.m. Some of those things are still being hammered out, but we will be able to let them pick the location that they want to go to, and then they can come and pick up that kit, but it will only be available to those enrolled in the Virtual Academy. And so by them providing that information on Google Forms, we will then be able to make sure that it is going to the correct students and that we are serving those students as well. And I think that is all I have. I believe next up is Simi Hamilton.
Well, no questions first, Lisa.
Oh, sorry, I guess it's the price slide.
Any questions from board members?
Any questions?
You just, you mentioned CEP at the beginning of your presentation. I'm sorry, I don't know what that means.
Oh, sorry, yeah. So CEP is the Community Eligibility Provision. It is the, it's a, it's a branch of the National School Lunch Program. It just provides free breakfast and free lunch to all students across our school district, can, excuse me, preschool through 12th grade with no application needed. So the days of filling, every parent filling out the back-to-school paperwork where they had to disclose their income information to us, that piece of paperwork is gone for the nutrition side. Every child gets it. The stigma of so-and-so has free lunch is gone. Yes? Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton. Somebody lost their mask. And I started going like I was muffled and couldn't get my words out.
Kids who've lost their mittens.
So good evening. I get the pleasure of talking to you tonight about transportation, social, emotional wellness, and extracurricular activities. You guys are losing steam, I can tell already, so we're going to make it, I promise we're going to make it through. So transportation strategies, obviously, being hybrid makes makes everything a lot easier. Just, we're going to continue to partner with First Student. They will not do our screener, but they will have their own screener that all First Student staff will go through each morning, much like ours, to just make sure that they don't have any symptoms or signs of of COVID before they come to work. Face coverings will be expected of not only our students but their staff, as as long as it doesn't impede them being able to see. We will social distance to the greatest extent possible on the bus. Windows will be open as long as that is possible. So we expect that we may do this for a while, but as long as it's not too cold or raining, but we will have the windows open to provide adequate ventilation. And then they have installed touchless hand sanitizers as you get in on every bus. Touchless hand sanitizers will be available. And then they had several different products that they offered us as far as sanitizing their buses. We went with the Zono Z71 Microbe Shield, and it's a monthly disinfectant. So what that is, is they spray their bus, just like what Travis talked about, how they spray the bus and it encapsulates everything. They do it once a month, and then anything that gets on the bus, essentially it's eaten and broken down, so so it keeps the bus safe. We'll do that once a month for the buses, they'll actually do it once a month for us. And talking about social, emotional wellness, obviously, our goal when we talk about all of this is to keep kids safe, but the social, emotional wellness side of it is they, we want them to feel safe as well. When you, when we talk about this and we talk about all the things that we've read and the webinars that we went to, I feel very fortunate because when you look at at the social, emotional wellness of of kids, a lot of what we read, it says, oh, you should be doing work on trauma. Well, as you know from presentations over the last year, our work in student family services has really focused on trauma. So the focus of last year has been working on adverse childhood experiences, kids who are dysregulated, responding to behaviors rather than reacting to it, and practical self-regulation strategies, not just for kids but for teachers. I know one of the things Dr. Ogres brought up is how do we help our teachers? Mindfulness strategies, one of the things we're going to do this year is we have, we've been building on our website to not only for our our students but for staff and parents, mindfulness activities that they can do. We are going to continue to do professional development around trauma for our, all of our staff members this school year. It's focusing on building relationships, safety, so we're providing safe environments where kids can come in, whether that's in our classroom, in our hallways, everywhere in our school buildings, restorative practices. So how do we mend relationships? If if we've tarnished a relationship, how do students come in and mend relationships? And then assessment. So if we really want to be a trauma-informed district, what are the tools we need? And I'm, we're going to be learning about this, my team, in the next few weeks. How do we assess that we really are a trauma-informed district? So that being said, we know, just like in reading and math, kids sometimes need extra support. We know in this district, we have caring adults, we have caring teachers. So kids come, they feel safe, but we know kids need extra support. So within our buildings, we have at least two of these staff members in every single one of our buildings to support kids who may need extra help. So we have counselors, we have student family advocates, we have behavior consultants, behavior specialists, and graduation coaches. Like I said, we have at least two of these available in every single one of our buildings. We also have district-level support. These are people who are my staff members, and these people are not people who sit up here in cubicles. These are people who are every single day out in buildings to support building student student success teams, out there working with individual students. I'm going to name them because they don't get enough credit for the good work that they do. So Meg Amundson is our district therapist. Heidi Clement is a student navigator. Lisa Fisher is our attendance facilitator. Felicia Moreno is our bilingual community liaison. She works with all of our Spanish-speaking families to make sure that they have access to resources in our community and in our school district. And Carrie Zimmer is recently hired. She'll actually start in the next couple of weeks, as you guys approved, it feels like years ago, but it was a few months ago, a social, emotional wellness coordinator. And really, her role is to make sure, out in buildings, working with teachers, working with teams, to make sure that we are implementing the trauma-informed practices that we've talked about, make sure that teachers have the resources that they need to be successful. We also, beyond this, we have community supports within within council bluffs. We're very fortunate that we've built these over the years. Within each building, we have school-based therapists that come within each building. I've I've put the names of them up there. We also, as as Mr. LaFerla asked earlier about abuse and neglect, we partner very closely with DHS. We all, as staff members, are mandatory reporters. We get training every year as to what we need to look for for those things. It is, it is very scary when we aren't seeing our kids. Being hybrid, we will at least be seeing our kids on an every-other-day basis to be able to check in on them. So we work very closely with DHS. We work very closely with the probation office and our county attorney's office to provide any extra supports that we can for kids who may need it. Lastly, today, I want to talk about our extracurricular activities. All of you know Iowa is very unique in the fact that we have summer sports. So we've been able to, while there's a lot of questions around some of the things that we're going to be doing, sports in Iowa, we've actually been doing it for a while. We get all of our guidance from the state. And then what we do as district staff, like Travis talked about, we look, I've worked with Travis, with Gary, with Emily Warren, with the athletic directors, and then our local health officials. And then what we do is we take that state guidance and I work with all those people, and we create our district expectations. And those district expectations really go above and beyond what the state has asked us to do because we want to make every effort we can to keep kids safe. So you've seen, we've shared with with you in our Friday notes, you've seen our baseball and softball protocols, you've seen our activities permission form that we ask every parent and student to sign, and you've also seen our summer youth, summer, summer athletic facility use form. That's our summer workouts, our weight rooms, just how our open gyms that we put out that every coach has, every parent knows, because we want our communication to go out, everybody knows what the expectations are before they come. Fall activities begin August 10th. We know that. We were told that a couple of weeks ago, that we will continue to have activities. We've received one piece of guidance so far, and that's that the football season, which is typically nine games, will be between five and seven games. We received that last week. We will get more guidance this week is what we've, we're expecting. Once we get that guidance, we'll go back to the team, the A.D.s, Travis, everybody, and then we'll create our district protocols to move forward. There have been bumps in the road, you guys have have gotten that information. We expect that there'll probably continue to be bumps in the road, but I want to put a shout out to our A.D.s, our parents, and really the athletes, because this year, baseball and softball numbers were the highest they've been in years, which I really did not expect, but they were the highest they've been in years. The parents and the players have really been forthright. They've come out and told us what's going on, and when we've had to have kids go into quarantine, they haven't had any issues. We've had to postpone some seasons or cancel some seasons, there haven't been any issues. Everybody has been top-notch in doing what we've asked them to do. This time, I will take any questions before we move forward.
Questions?
So when it comes to the bus drivers and in in the transportation portion, if a bus driver is positive, how will that affect our bus pickup? You know, if they turn into a positive, unlike a normal flu where they might be out for a day, if they're positive and they're out for a long range, how will that affect the pickup of that route?
Great question. The bus company has, they have what, they have extra bus drivers on hand at all times, so they have, I don't want to call it a spare factor because that sounds like I'm talking about buses, but essentially, they have extra drivers that they hire just in case, and they have that at all times. And I get a weekly communication that tells us about that.
Okay. And then when it comes to sports, I agree, you know, we've been pretty lucky when it comes to that, but those have been non-contact sports. So when we come to sports like wrestling, where it's just complete physical contact, I know that we won't get recommendations here for another few weeks, but is there, when did those practices start? Do those start earlier or later?
Well, wrestling is a winter sport, so we won't have wrestling for a while, but the sport coming up that is the most physical or the most hands-on is football, which is a fall sport, and that's, that practice will start August 10th. And like I said, we haven't received any guidance on that yet. They they have told us that it will be this week. And once we have that, we we've shared that with you as soon as we get it, so once we have it, we'll share it with you, and then we will create our district expectations and we'll share that with you right when we do that.
And that'll include like how many outbreaks before we cut the season or or how many positive tests and all that? Okay.
Generally, what they've done is said that's up to the local control, so then we will, that's when I'll meet with the health officials and we'll write that in our expectations.
Perfect. Thank you.
I guess, I guess I had one. Along the lines of the bus, so if there was a positive case on a bus, does that bus get disinfected before it comes, you know, goes back into circulation or is there backup? Say it was in the morning, do they have that taken care of by the afternoon pickup?
Because of the disinfectant that they're using, essentially, they shouldn't have to disinfect it again because it's a 30-day disinfectant, and if they did, they would actually be counter-active to what they're using. Does that make sense?
I think your question is if a bus has a COVID-positive patient.
Right, that's, that's, that's.
There's a different disinfecting process to decontaminate the COVID exposure.
I would, I don't, I don't know that I know the answer to that question because the disinfectant they're using is. the disinfectant they're using is 30 days, but I will find that out for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that disinfectant have any reaction on certain kids?
No, they've tested it, and it, after the, I think it was 15 minutes, it is completely safe to the touch.
I say that one may now be a time. If a student has, if a parent has their student at home, and they are virtual, and parent gets suddenly called back to work, now you're no longer going to be at home, you're now going to be a, you know, your student now needs to go to school full-time, or part-time, or whatever. Is there a exception process we're going to allow families to go through to try to get their student enrolled away from the Virtual Academy, say, into that?
What, I, and I, I mean, somebody else may answer this, but I think our answer for a lot of these situations is, when we go to the Virtual Academy, we hope that they stay for the semester, but in a lot of these situations, it's going to be a one-on-one situation, and we're going to work with families, because that's what we do. If there's nothing else, I will welcome back up Mr. Milburn.
Thank you.
All right. So as we get into the human resources realm, I think one thing we can probably all relate to is being inundated with information on a constant basis. And so it has been important for us to look at the guidance from the CDC, the Department of Labor, from OSHA, and try to package that into an employee-friendly, transparent manual that can guide us moving forward. And out of that, many questions have come up about, what do I do when I'm exposed? What do I do when I'm confirmed? What kind of leave can I take? What kind of leave is available? What kind of accommodations might be available to me if I have an underlying health condition? So I would like to address a few of, a few of those things. Before we get into that, I think it's important that we get some shared terminology. This has been a learning process for me, since it's a little bit more in the medical field, so I want to get some key terminology, so our employees, our students, our staff understand we have the shared terminology moving forward. A PUI, a Person Under Investigation, is someone, if, is an employee that suspects they have COVID, maybe they went to get a test and they're waiting on results, that employee should stay home. If that employee or a student is in a household, and someone is suspected of having COVID, and they're waiting on the test results, they should stay home. So they're officially a, a person under investigation while we're waiting on results. Exposure is something we talk about. I, I remember when this first started, and it was like, if you were at Walmart on 16th Street, you know, we've come a long way from that part. Now it's like, I could be at Walmart, but if I wasn't less than six feet from you for greater than 15 minutes, then technically, I'm not exposed, right? And so exposure is, is a key piece, and it's very natural to say, well, this person was exposed, and then this person was exposed, and then am I exposed? And so we're really going to go back to that CDC guidance of, were you less than six feet for more than fif, 15 or more minutes with that person? And then our confirmed cases, the, the return-to-work guidance looks a little different for symptomatic and asymptomatic employees and students. And I think this was just updated again on the 20th of July, I think. But the important part here I want to point out is, our department is really here to support employees in accessing the right leave, and providing guidance and support on when to return back to work. And on top of that, the healthcare check company is a partner in that as well. And so no one's really going to be left alone, just going, I wonder if I can come back, or, or if I should come back, or I shouldn't come back. There'll be many, forgive the word, touchpoints to, with employees on coaching them to come back. Another thing, many questions around would be travel exposure. And so right now, Iowa doesn't really have any current guidelines on domestic travel. And the CDC has guidelines for a 14-day quarantine after international travel. So we will follow the state and our local guidelines, and then we will fall back on the CDC guidelines for that, if needed. As a, as our employees in the district, we've very, we've limited travel for professional development significantly, significantly, significantly. So there won't be too many people traveling this fall for professional development opportunities. Employee leave. This is, I, I think, a really big source of anxiety, really around the questions like, what happens if I get sick? And, and where do we go from there? So, once again, as we work with employees, we're really taking that support mindset, and we are going to work with each employee on a case-by-case basis on what is best for them, based on their individual circumstances. A, a big piece that came out was the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, and that really has two kind of major lanes and two types of leave. That first part is that emergency paid sick leave, that's more of a short-term leave, and that is for someone that has been exposed or has been diagnosed, and is for someone, if you're caring for someone that's been diagnosed, and/or if your school or childcare is closed due to COVID. So that is the, the emergency paid sick leave, and then the, the family medical expansion is a longer-term leave, and that really focuses on childcare due to school closures and daycare closures from COVID. Other leave options, FMLA, Extended Medical Disability Leave, Leave With Absence, and once again, there are so many variables here with individuals, health conditions, doctor's orders, things like that. We need to take with those by a case-by-case basis, as we're supporting employees through the process, accessing leave. The major question about underlying health conditions, if, if there are increased, increased, excuse me, increased risk of severe illness. And the point I want to part out here, or, excuse me, the point I want to highlight here is the interactive process. And this is really, once the employee reaches out to us and, and says, I have an underlying health condition, I'm at risk for severe illness, they fill out a form, and we begin this interactive process to try to determine the best accommodations for them. There's been many questions about what specific accommodations can we provide? Once again, there's so many different variables, it's hard to, to speak in broad stances and say something that'll cover everybody, but here are some accommodations. They may include additional or enhanced protective masks, face shields, gear, things like that. We might be able to eliminate or substitute less critical parts of a job. For example, if someone has an underlying health condition, and they typically do lunch duty, we might say, you don't have to do lunch duty. We're not going to put you in the cafeteria with all those kids. You're not going to do that. Or maybe we'll swap you out, and you're going to do recess duty that's outside with 15 kids versus being in the cafeteria with additional kids. So based on their condition, based on what their doctors say and are recommending, we will work with them to the greatest of our ability. Additional or enhanced protective measures. Travis showed some barriers, some Plexiglas. We have some other things in the works that we might be able to utilize, and then some temporary modification of work schedules. So with that, I would, I would take questions.
Questions from the board? Sure.
If they are, one of the teachers who signed up to help kick off the online learning academy, and they are positive or homesick for an extended period of time, would they still have the option then to teach for the online portion?
No. They will not, because people that are teaching online are also teaching in the class at the same time. And I, I kind of look at Dr. Vorthman, because he's the expert in virtual learning.
Yeah, I know, I, I know it's a new area for everybody, but if, if you're home and, and you're test positive, but you're not, you know, showing symptoms, you're asymptomatic, then I didn't know if there was that option there or not. And then if they have an under, if, for a teacher, if they have an underlying health require, or, uh, condition, do they have the option to mandate the mask in their room?
We, we have definitely talked about that, and I think that's where we are leaning. Dr. Merle, you can talk about that more if you'd like.
We will. One of the parts that, as we've gone through the discussion, is when my daughter was in middle school, her teacher had cancer. And so it was a separate letter that was stating that, as she's going through treatment, that when they're in this classroom, it, that all students will wear a face mask. And so we will, we've also created some additional things that Travis did for me, was additional podiums that have these barriers that come up higher and around for a teacher to stand behind. We're also looking, we did buy face shields, and we're looking at the new ones that they're now putting out. And so we will continue to provide whatever measure we can to ensure that teacher feels safe, and that we put enough protective places, things in place for her.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Merle.
Any other questions? I do have one. I know, yeah, and it's more of, of clarity on the various classes of, of leave. I'm very much a visual learner, and sometimes words get in the way of my understanding. Is there a way that, that we can put these various leave in a, in a flowchart form, so that those of us who, who learn better by graphical representation can look at it and, and make sense of it? I'm sure it, it just, I, I can read it, but if, if there's a flowchart says, you know, hey, is this COVID-related? Yes, we go down this aisle.
Like an algorithm.
It, it, it would just make...
I empathize, because I've been reading it for about four months now. And I still have to go back to my flowchart. Linked in the operations plan is a, a table, and it says, scenario one, the type of leave available, scenario two, the type of leave available, scenario three. So this is available to employees when they go in to fill out the form. And like I said, our number-one job is here to support them through this process. So there is a bit of, of visual there. But I, I, I empathize, because I still get a question off the cuff, and I have to go back to this cheat sheet and work through it.
Great. Thank you.
As Dr. Vorthman is coming up, you're next, correct. I also want to thank Dr. Agress. As we were going through creating this, and Gary was building and, and working through these scenarios, we were bugging her and sending her drafts, and she was giving us, she was giving us notes to go back to. So we want to thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Dr. Vorthman.
I'm going to provide a little bit of additional clarity around the Virtual Academy experience. And we're really excited about the Virtual Academy, because it provides yet another layer of options for our students and families during the return-to-learn phases. And the interesting thing I wanted to point out about this is regardless of the phase of return-to-learn that we're in, onsite, hybrid, or remote, the Virtual Academy is, is always open for students. And so what we would ask is that between now and August 7th, if students are interested in attending the Virtual Academy next year, that they would apply to do that by registering online. And it's the first thing that you see once you go to the Council Bluff Schools webpage. If they click on that link and register, that's all they have to do. There is, there's no second step to that. There's no confirmation process. It's totally an opportunity for them to elect in. And there will be provided additional information through kind of an orientation session that will happen before school starts for students and families. And I'll provide a little bit more information about that in a moment. So in a nutshell, I want to provide kind of a high-level overview of what the Virtual Academy was, was kind of founded upon, or kind of the guiding principles that we used in developing the, the Virtual Academy. First and foremost, it was that we wanted to provide teacher-delivered, high-quality instruction. And so the, at the center of our model is a highly qualified teacher providing an interactive opportunity for students in the classroom and at home. And that model permeates through all three of our return-to-learn phases, so that we're not asking people to do something entirely different. We're asking them to implement the return-to-learn plan and provide an opportunity for those students who wish to remain at home during the pandemic. Secondly, we want meaningful collaboration and interaction. We want to maintain the integrity of the classroom community experience, the collaboration and sharing that happens in a learning setting, and the opportunity for students to maintain access to their peers. And then lastly, we want to emphasize that the importance of shared stakeholder responsibility, and the, how this is magnified in a virtual setting, and how everybody has to work even harder to make sure they maintain communication, and that they accept responsibility for being self-regulated and motivated to achieve in a virtual setting. So our Virtual Academy is open to all students in grades K through 12. It's, there is no restrictions on special needs or students with English language needs. All students are welcome in this setting. We are asking that, that families fill out the registration due by August 7th. It's as simple as four questions. What's your student's name? What grade are they in? What school do they presently attend? And what's their ID number? And if they don't know their ID number, just ask them what their lunch number is, the number they type in for lunch. They all remember that. And if they still can't remember it, just leave it blank. It's not a required field. We'll be happy to provide that. And then they hit the submit button, and they're done. It's easy.
Lexus Crest, 2284.
Everybody remembers their ID. Yeah. We've also provided a tool in the, in the registration materials that is a readiness rubric for online learning that was provided by Michigan Virtual, and it really provides a great talking point for students and families to work through as they think about if this is a good opportunity for them. Because we know that virtual learning is not the setting that will work best for all students. And so before kind of taking that leap and registering for the Virtual Academy, we would ask that parents and students take an opportunity, kind of rate their readiness for such a virtual experience, and take that into consideration before they make a, make a decision. We would ask that students and families make a semester commitment to the Virtual Academy, and that ensures that we can make sure that we have enough space available, and that we have students scheduled into the right settings. And as Mr. Hamilton mentioned earlier, we certainly will provide exceptions if we need to along the way, to make sure that we can accommodate as many families as possible. The availability of the courses and the number of sections available will be based on the number of teachers that we're able to recruit to participate, and the number of spaces that we have available left in classes. I'm going to talk a little bit in greater detail about the model that we're going to use to put students in different classrooms. But our goal is to be able to provide this in every grade level, at every building, as long as we have teachers to teach in those settings. If we don't, we will accommodate those students in another building at the same grade level. We also want to use what we're going to be called kind of a building-based classroom assignments, and this is what makes our Virtual Academy kind of unique among the six that are approved by the Department of Education. We don't have a separate school or a separate building that will house all of our virtual students. Instead, we've chosen to maintain the, the small feel of our neighborhood schools and our buildings as the hub of instruction for our Virtual Academy. So students will be continued to be tied right back to their home schools and the teachers that are in their classroom, so that it maintains that continuity of instruction and the relationships that are built in our, in our neighborhood buildings. We will utilize a, we will utilize a, a, a model that we're calling sections within a section, and I'll illustrate that for you here in a moment. And our class sizes will continue to be the typical class sizes that we have in Council Bluffs. There will not be any all-virtual sections or competing sections, and we won't balloon sections. So teachers won't have a, a class load of, of 25 plus 10 kids online. We'll continue to utilize our classroom ratios. And so typically for us, that means that at primary grades, those numbers are smaller than 22 to 1. At intermediate, they're 25 to 1 or smaller. And typically, our classrooms in our middle schools and high schools are between 25 to 27, and we try our hardest not to go past 30, only in rare circumstances. So we will continue to honor that, to make sure that we have adequate classroom space. And then we also will be providing training opportunities and specialized training and support for our teachers. And we have a comprehensive professional development plan that we intend to provide that starts next week with our Summer Academy kickoff, that provides a whole-week-long opportunity for teachers to dive into what virtual learning looks like in their classroom. We also will follow that up with what we call We also will follow that up with what we call CBU offerings, which you've heard about before, which take place after school that are led by our teacher leaders. We've redesigned our district professional development schedule to utilize early release time on Mondays at four increments during the first semester that will focus solely on digital learning and engaging students in a virtual environment. Fourth, we also repurposed an FTE that we had in our school district to kind of be the trainer of virtual learning in our school district. And that will be kind of the, the role that Devin Shoney will take on this next year, kind of leading the initiative around virtual learning. You also notice that we provided for all teachers, the, in your handout tonight, kind of a playbook for what remote instruction would look like and kind of an instructional routine to get people started. That kind of walks them through kind of how a lesson would be put together and how it's a little bit different than what we've done before. Not that it's a cookie cutter, but it's a starting place for teachers to kind of go back to and refer to as they start going down a virtual pathway. And then last, we've redeployed some resources that we had at the district level back to the building level so that we have coaches and facilitators onsite in the buildings to be able to help teachers feel more confident. We know that teachers are going to be in lots of different places. Some are going to be ready right out the gate to attack this and, and are going to do a great job. And some are going to be a little bit more anxious and need some additional support. And some are going to be, are going to struggle. And we're committed to making sure that we provide the support that they need to make sure that they feel comfortable in the virtual environment. The other thing I would mention is that in this first year, we're providing a $3,000 stipend for teachers who opt into this, kind of this first-year trial of Virtual Academy. And this is kind of our way to thank them and incentivize this first group to help us kind of build and, and mature this Virtual Academy and get it operationalized off the ground. In addition, all students who are in the Virtual Academy will utilize the Council Bluffs Community School District curriculum and our resources so that you can be assured that the quality of the materials that they're using are the same that they would receive in a classroom. We're not outsourcing any of our content or our instructional delivery to a third-party vendor. This is Council Bluffs high-quality curriculum developed by Council Bluffs teachers, implemented by Council Bluffs teachers, and provided by Council Bluffs teachers. And then last, we will be providing a virtual orientation session for parents. And to, I believe, Mr. LaFerla's question earlier about kind of how are we going to provide support for families, we're developing a series of on-demand training sessions just for parents that help them navigate Google Classroom, give them strategies for maintaining contact with their parents, with parents and teachers, as well as how our online resources work so that they never feel like they are at a loss when trying to help their students navigate a Chromebook. So I mentioned a little bit earlier this idea of sections within sections. And in our onsite phase, if, when we, if we were to have all kids come back and be, be 100% in schools, a typical classroom might have 24 kids in it at, at an elementary school. And so a teacher would see 18 of those students in front of him or her. And then perhaps five additional students might be learning online remotely in the Virtual Academy. And they would all be learning the same material at the same time. In the hybrid phase, it would look very similar. The only difference would be the number of students who are physically present is cut in half. So in this example, there's only nine students in front of the teacher. There's an additional nine students that are in the hybrid plan that are attending remotely. And those two students will swap on alternate days, but still five students who attend the Virtual Academy. So at any configuration we have, it's still the same group of kids interacting, sharing the same experiences and learning together. They're just configured in different ways for different parts of our plan so that we can maintain some of the mitigation efforts that we've outlined tonight. We'll have two primary products that we'll utilize to provide organization and structure for our online academy, for our Virtual Academy. And those are the products that we've used for many years through the Google Enterprise suite. The first is Google Classroom. And that's kind of a learning management system that provides an opportunity for teachers to provide all of their coursework and students to submit coursework through the Google Classroom. And it also allows parents the opportunity to have a window into the classroom to see what their students are working on and to communicate back and forth with the teacher right through a single point of entry. We'll also be utilizing Google Meet, which provides an opportunity for the two-way video conferencing using the owl camera, which you'll, you'll see here tonight, that provides an opportunity for students to interact both from behind the screen and those that are onsite. So it maintains that continuity of connection between students and teachers while they're still enrolled in the Virtual Academy. We've chose to stick with Google Classroom and Google Meet because of the enhanced security features that they have. The only way that students can access these two features is by having a cbcSD.org email account. Anybody outside of that domain is not allowed inside of our Google Meet. And only if the teacher allows someone from the outside can they access that video conference. They're also all recorded and archived only on our server, only for our students. And the same goes for Google Classroom. As those videos from the end-of-the-day instruction are uploaded to Google Classroom, students can access them at any time. They're archived so that if the schedule for the student doesn't work on a normal situation, that they can access it on demand so that it provides both a real-time option and an in-demand option for students and families that works best for them. At last, I want to touch just based, just briefly on the enhanced responsibility. And this is what, what I really want to drive home is the importance of communication. We know that communication is important when we're in a traditional school environment, but it even gets more elevated when we don't have that ability to stop and talk to you face-to-face. And so this requires a, a great deal of responsibility on the part of families, of, of parents, to make sure that they can provide a quiet and safe space for students to learn, that they are able to maintain some structure in their home that allows a student to have a schedule so that they can access their coursework. It requires that the student have a certain level of self-discipline and self-motivation that, that permits them to take part in the classroom environment, to keep track of their assignments and to complete their work in a timely manner. It requires the school to continue to provide wraparound supports for the student, even if they are not physically present. And that could include student assistance teams, access to counselors, student-family advocates, and nutrition, like we heard about tonight. And then lastly, it requires the teacher to provide an extra layer of communication, whether that is by telephone, by the use of Google messaging, or email, or Google Classroom to make sure that parents continue to feel in the loop and have access to information about their students and their progress along the way. So that's kind of the Virtual Academy in a nutshell. And before I close tonight, I want to take a special opportunity to provide some information about where students can go and parents can go to provide more information. Our website that our communications department has done a fantastic job providing information on provides this great brochure as well as clickable links about our Virtual Academy. The brochure provides additional background information about the courses that are offered and some of the procedures that we'll implement, and then a link to the registration that's due August 7th. August 7th. And then lastly tonight, I want to talk a little bit about the importance of maintaining communication with our parents and families, especially those parents who may have students with specialized needs. And that includes students who may have 504 plans or who are English language learners or students with IEPs. We have unfortunately been rather slow from the State Department in getting information out to school districts around how we make sure that we're providing individualized instruction during this time to students with special needs. And I was just on another webinar this afternoon where another bit of information was provided. And we were informed that we would not get additional information about service delivery until the middle of August. However, that's not acceptable for us. So we've been working with our special education leadership team, our interim director, Dr. Wesley Glusha, and Ms. Lori Durand, our assistant director, as well as the core team. And we put together a plan that we're going to go forward with to engage all of our families. And so starting in, in about one week, we will be providing some professional development to teachers on how to navigate this world of using IEPs in a virtual environment and in these different remote, remote learning, hybrid learning, and onsite learning phases. And that will happen next week during Summer Academy. The following week, all of our special education teachers will be meeting with a member of the special education leadership team and their building principal to start looking at how we can best serve students in these three phases of learning and documenting a proposed plan for students. We will then be reaching out to every family, contacting every single parent that has a student with special needs to visit with them about what their concerns are for the fall and how we can partner together to make sure we provide a plan that meets their needs, whether that is the Virtual Academy or whether that is the hybrid plan or whether that is some individualized version of the two that makes sense for them. And then we will complete a plan together. That may be over the phone. It may be using Google Meet. Or if they are comfortable, it may be meeting face-to-face in a socially-distanced fashion. Our priority, though, is to make sure that parents are provided access to communication and that they have a plan that meets the needs of their students in this time. So with that, I will pause and welcome any questions that you might have.
I just want to recognize that, that's a heavy lift and it's a lot of work. And your passion, I can feel it and I can sense it. And your priorities are clear. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, I just said, the, you mentioned the virtual orientation. Is that strictly for the Virtual Academy or will there be something similar for the hybrid model for parents?
So we're planning back-to-school nights right now, which will enable parents kind of to have that traditional feel of back-to-school. And we're planning that the virtual orientation will take place kind of in lieu of that, almost like a back-to-school night for parents who are taking place in the Virtual Academy. Because what we don't want to lose in the Virtual Academy are some of those traditional experiences that students usually have. We just have to think about how we do them differently.
You mentioned the back-to-school nights with the limited building access. Does that look different than the, the actual building back-to-school night?
I'm going to let Mark and Julie address that when they close up here on slide 64, I believe. We're almost there. Hang with us.
She said 60.
Yeah, I said 60, yeah. And, and I apologize. Chris has been having connectivity issues. So I'm trying to, we're going back and forth on here and he's trying to, he's now connected John by phone. I was trying to get John to help him because it was keeping him from being able to access.
Question?
Troy.
Unless Chris has one.
Chris, do you have a question?
Well, I missed a lot of that. So I'll, I'll go ahead and if I have a question, I'll be on there.
Okay.
Okay, if I could say to Chris, it was by far the most spellbinding discussion. I feel bad. So we, we've decided to allow our students who are in the Virtual Academy to do activities, sports, things like that. Other districts around us are kind of frowning on that and saying, heck, no way we're going to allow that because they want to be home, they can be home. What's our, I get, like, I don't, I have no opinion on that. What's our thinking?
Our thinking is...
They're our kids.
Exactly. I couldn't have said it better. You know, the, the, we had a lot of conversation about what we believed about education and what we believed about the role of public schools. And the same was true with students with special needs. Most virtual schools don't accept students with special needs. And that was a non-starter for us. Of course, we're going to take students who have special needs. We're just going to figure out the best way to partner with families to accommodate their needs. And so when it came to extracurricular activities, that really wasn't a conversation. It was of, of course, they're going to participate with their, with their homeschool students. I think what sets our, I think what, what makes it easier for us is we don't have a specific school building where all of them are, are part of. And I think there's some stigma attached to that about potential recruiting and, and could there be violations that go along with that? We don't have to worry about any of that because all of our students are attached right to the home buildings that they would have attended anyway.
But in general, just because we're more caring, we really love our kids.
That's right. And, and Troy, when I was thinking about it, I also thought about the social bubble that the NBA is trying to really try to protect their players. And it may be that a parent is concerned about their child being for a long period of time, especially in middle school and high school with several different groups and going to different, where a sports team or something would be 20 or less maybe, or 25 more controlled. And they feel a little safer with allowing that, their child to have that experience. And so I just, even like early college academy, it was important to me they stayed connected to the district and got to participate, same way we felt about the Virtual Academy.
I have two questions. And they're both around enrollment. So I know that our non-district students had, if they were interested, had a earlier deadline date where a lot of the districts have not made their decisions yet and, or didn't at that time and still haven't at this point in time. Is there an option to expand now that we have, as other districts are, are making their decisions, if they're not happy with that option to be able to enroll?
I'm going to let Mr. Hamilton address that because he takes care of all things open enrollment.
Perfect.
So there was a specific extension of open enrollment that went through July 15th. There are still options for students to open enroll. They would have to show a hardship. And, and essentially, what we have done as a district is if there was a medical note, a doctor saying that they needed to leave a district for a medical reason, then we have approved it. But the, their home district would have to approve it for us to accept it. So that would be up to the home district. So there are still options for, I'm kind of sounding like an infomercial, but...
You should.
There are still options if, if, if students were to find out that they're going, let's say, and, and for, for medical reasons, that yes, they could do an open enrollment request, but the, the district would have to approve it for us, and then we would have to approve it.
Okay. And then in a reverse, and I'm not sure where this question goes, but if somebody signed up for the online academy because they didn't know what we would be recommending and voting on tonight, and they feel more comfortable with their child going at a hybrid level, can they de-enroll from the academy? Is there a time, timeframe? Is that also the 7th? Thank you.
And I did have one following up on our open enrollment students. Will they have a choice of which school that they can enroll in or will that be to our discretion?
It's somewhat both of those answers because of, because of, we will have to look at where our students are and the teacher availability. So it'll be somewhat limited just based upon the capacity.
Sure.
But they could choose a specific school and if there were space there, they would get that school.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll ask a question to Cory so he can go back. On the Virtual Academy, in the book it says that there may be some courses that aren't offered there that I may attend in person. And so explain to me how that works just at the high school level.
Sure.
You may have kind of some conflicts.
Yeah. That's another thing that sets our virtual experience apart from, I believe, all of the other ones that are offered in the state of Iowa that I'm aware of at this point. And that's we will allow students to choose courses in person and/or in virtual. And so for example, if a student wanted to attend a Foods One class, we currently don't offer that in our Virtual Academy because there are some classes that you really need to attend in person because they're either hands-on or they require a significant amount of team interaction that just can't be replicated. TradeWorks 2 is another example of that. Playing in an ensemble is another part of that. And so we want students to continue to take advantage of those opportunities. So we'll allow them to do that in person. And so the great thing about our Virtual Academy is that students can access the coursework in real-time or on-demand. And so however their schedule has to be massaged, we're going to try to make that work for them.
Okay. So are we going to offer, this is a way for kids who need to take, say, World History and they don't have a way to fit in their schedules, but they'll be able to access content online, similar to how we did Edutunty, but Edutunty is kind of crappy platform. So this would be wonderful.
I think Troy's opening up another door we haven't got, we haven't had time to prepare for.
So there, there is, right now, we're, here's where we're sticking. That students have a predictable schedule every day and that they have, so at high school, they have seven classes. And that the classes that they are taking, they are enrolled in that class with a classroom of peers. I think that the opportunities are unlimited for Virtual Academy down the road. And, but we're going to focus on just getting started this year with putting kids in sections within sections, as I've talked about before.
I'm thinking like we had my daughter take a couple of classes this summer. She didn't have room for them in her normal schedule. And if she could maybe be regular hybrid and then take virtual... And if she could maybe be regular hybrid and then take virtual at night or something, that might be a way to fit in something that's difficult.
Or one, just one more, are you getting a positive response from teachers interested in the virtual academy?
Yeah, as of this afternoon, there were over 100 teachers that had indicated they were interested in participating in virtual academy. So that would be roughly 20% of our total teaching force, just a little under.
Dr. Vorthman, we also share how many students we have outside the district enrolling, and how many students inside currently as of today, say, four o'clock.
Yeah, so we had 29 requests for open enrollment that were approved for open enrollment into the school district for the virtual academy. And then last I checked before the board meeting, we were just about to touch 900 students applying for the virtual academy in district.
Are those 29, are they all over the place, mostly high school, mostly...
All over the place.
And from long ways.
We took calls from all corners of the state, all grade levels, and there's still an opportunity for us to have more, especially with the hardship that Mr. Hamilton talked about, and as well as the kindergarten deadline isn't until September, so.
So the, the plan says we'll, are we supplying those kids with the Chromebook then?
We are, absolutely. Yep, our technology department is prepared to ship out Chromebooks wherever they need to go.
And as Dr. Vorthman closes, I want to thank him for the work that he's done on this and the collaboration that Mr. Hamilton and our IT, John Stiles, has done. And again, I want to encourage the board to know that the traditional K-12 school system is, is going to be reinvented. COVID is going to cause us to do this, and I really feel like Council Bluffs is on the cutting edge of doing some things outside of the norm. And I really appreciate the, the challenge that we've stepped up to, to meet the needs of our parents, students, and our community members, and in the state. And I know this is a big shift for our teachers. And one thing that we're going to have to be patient with is, it will take time for all of our teachers to really improve their craft of how to teach online. And we're going to have to support, support, provide that professional development, and continue to support. But I, I have every, I have no doubt, all confidence that our teachers are going to rise to the challenge and really dig in and get that professional development and improve their craft. And that's what it's going to take to really be able to meet our students in this hybrid plan. So Mr. Stiles is here to share some good news about how technology is going to support this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I feel like you guys are on a marathon with this presentation. I'll try to make this as short as possible. One of the things that we are, we are really blessed with in our school district is the Blink Wi-Fi project. Through our partnership with the Iowa West Foundation, Potawatomi County Community Foundation, Google, the city of Council Bluffs, and also the city of Carter Lake, we are able to provide a large amount of our student body with network at home. We are fast-tracking Phase Six and Phase Seven. Those, that'll include the Longfellow area and the Rue area. With that Wi-Fi expansion, we will accommodate about 85% of our student body. Of those 15% that are not covered by Blink, we have done home surveys, and we have found that the vast majority of that 15% already have some type of network at home. For those that don't, we would be able to use the Cox Connect to Compete. So really exciting, we are way beyond what a lot of other school districts are doing. Just in comparison, some of, some other school districts that I am aware of spent the vast majority of their COVID dollars three months ago providing network at home for their students. So with this, we are extremely fortunate, and it is very exciting, we are unique. The Blink Wi-Fi experiment is the world's largest free internet for any city. So that's pretty amazing.
That is pretty amazing, that's right.
The other side of this, you heard Dr. Vorthman talk a lot about pieces and parts that are going to involve technology. Technology is 100% here for our students and our staff. One of the things that we have to do is laptop distribution. For our secondary schools that are in the area, we are going to provide on the back-to-school night, if they don't have a device or they're new to our district, we're going to give them a device that night. If they miss that, we will have it in our technology centers. In addition, they can come to the drive-through, or we'll, we'll find a way to get it to them. For the elementary, this is already in place, day one, we are going to have devices for students that don't have their, their computers, AKA example, kindergarten kids, new students, they will be in their classroom ready on day one. So the first time, whether they're in hybrid or whether they're in the, the regular, normal school, they're going to get their device. If they don't make those, they'll be able to go to the drive-through, much like they did last spring, and they'll have the opportunity to get their device then. Now, the support of these devices, we really hope that nobody broke their device over the summer. However, whatever model we're in, we will have the drive-through technology center available, and that actually is going to be over at our Canesville alternative, and there'll be a phone number you call, much like last spring, and we will coordinate, exchange in the device. We'll have a box where essentially the, the staff member will leave the device, the, the student will leave the device, and they'll swap them. So no contact. We also have, when we get a device in, we're going to make sure that it, we, we've been recommended to wait 10 days before we do any maintenance on it and things of that nature. We also have disinfectant, we've worked with facilities to kind of call what we call clean The other option is if we're in hybrid or we're onsite at the secondary level, they can come in the technology centers, much like they've done any other school year. For the elementary, they, the, the elementary teacher for the student can make a request through our help desk team. Then through our district vehicles, we bring the device to them, within 24 hours, the device is swapped, and off they go. It's really a great process, we've done this for years, it works out really, really well. And as a department, we guarantee within 24 hours, with one exception, and that would be weekends. The security of these devices, not just because of COVID, it's important that these devices and our students are secure 24/7, whether they're onsite or offsite. Always, we're filtering these devices. We can see where they've gone, and we're also filtering. And the, these websites that are blocked are updated, not daily, but actually every three to five minutes. Every device in our district that the students have has securely web filtering on it. In addition, two years ago, we purchased AMP and Umbrella. What that's there for on our Chromebooks is to ensure the malware side. The malware are those hidden things, and we've all heard about them. We also have the Google Admin Console, and what that really does for us, there is, in the enterprise, there's security features, AKA, when you get a phishing or a spam email, when you click on that and say, ooh, that was phishing, immediately, that proto, or that updates everybody else's email in the district, and it shuts it down. We also have alerts that come through on that. All of the sudden, student X, their email has started to email out thousands of emails. We immediately shut that down through this process. Finally, in the enterprise support, you heard Dr. Vorthman talk about this, this is highly secure. Google is good at what they do, and they're good at securing things. Nobody can get into our, our, our Google classroom without having a Council Bluffs email or the teacher allowing them in. This is really good stuff. It makes me very confident to stand in front of you. I have seen, one thing that happened this summer is Google kicked it into hyperdrive for all of these features. It's a company that reacts quickly, and they saw the remote learning was going to be a thing that, this is, this is the new norm. School board, do you have questions for me?
Questions from the board.
Umbrella malware is new, right? Like it's fairly new.
It's fairly new, yes.
We have other... Let them go to certain websites and...
What I like about that particular thing is from the backend, for instance, we can kind of go in and see, when did the infection, or when did the malware try to install?
Okay, thank you very much.
With that, I believe I'm introducing Ms. Julie Smith.
And these are our last two presenters. I'm surprised Julie didn't put her little tutu, I said, there, there are a caboose. So they're bringing it up to the rear and talking to us about what it will look like when our school's open in the fall.
All right. So we know that you have received a lot of information tonight about the Return to Learn Plan, about the operations manual, and I want you to imagine right now, if you were a principal or a teacher in our district, and now your job is to make this a way of life, because that's what they will be doing. Mark and I will be supporting them, working in lots of ways to make, help make this operational in all of our buildings, but it is a big job ahead. And I know we've been getting lots of shout-outs, but I can't give enough shout-outs to the work that they are doing and have done so far on these plans. We really started on this last spring, going around a cycle of feedback and input, both at the teacher level and at the administrative level. We worked through the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. What would happen is we would send out the plan, like, for example, the hybrid plan, our very first draft, which seems like years ago, but it was just months ago, where we sent out the plan for their questions and brought those back, and then took that, those questions and revised the plan. We did the same thing with the principals, brought it back to them again for further clarification and questions, and we did that again until we felt like we had a product that we could put out to teachers for general feedback on it and looking at that. So we went through several phases of the impact, and feedback and input with teachers and administrators in both the, the phases of learning as well as the operation manual. Another thing that we know is really important is, because this is so multifaceted, as you, you know, sat through hours tonight, it's easy to get compartmentalized with, within our levels of looking at that. So facilities is looking at it one way, nutrition is looking at it one way, but how do we get everybody together so that all works together? So, you know, this summer, secondary principals are, were on staff, so we had a great opportunity to really work a good plan out with Lisa, with Raymond, to, how is this cafeteria going to look? It, it sounds easy, it's not easy, but they've got such a great workable plan now going in because we were able to align those things throughout the system. Spent considerable time with middle school principals today, just trying to figure out, when you're, when you're in a hybrid system and you're looking at alternate schedules every other week, every other day, how does that make sense to a sixth grader? How do we make it make sense to a sixth grader? You know, and it's just a lot of work getting it at that level. So again, appreciate them so much for what they're doing. Mark's going to talk about the professional development, we'll skip that down a little bit. But the building, the district operations manual was designed to give a foundation for buildings so that they could make their manuals unique to their building. And so they do have autonomy to go in and take what you've heard today and make it fit for what they need. So in things like the isolation rooms, for example, principals will work with the custodial staff with facilities and maintenance to make sure it meets the requirements that Mr. Kuzire, you talked about. That's one of the things that they're going to do, it's going to be a different place in each building, and they'll know what's unique to that. They will be working with their teams, and they have been working with their teams, to figure out each one of these components and how it's going to look at TJ, at Edison, at Kern, for example, with doing those things. They're working right now with walkthroughs with custodians to look at signage, to look at directionality in their buildings, to figure those things out. So it's workable from all areas, making sure that teachers, you know, what's their process for making sure teachers have what they need for sanitization when they need it, those type of things like that. All of the information that the buildings are going to put together will be on their, their building's website, their school websites, so that families will know and teachers will know, so it kind of works in tandem with the plan that you were presenting today. There'll be an addendum for each school building so that everyone can know what that's going to be like at their buildings. So our next step in terms of operations, and, and Mark's going to talk with you more about the learning piece of the plan, but our next step in the operations piece is going to happen this Thursday and Friday, when we are meeting with principals, we're going to be doing, we, we will have all of cabinet there, we're going to be doing a, a lot of activities with them, just to, just to make sure that they thoroughly understand this plan and know how to get to their next steps, and then Mark and I will be working with them with these plans to make sure that, you know, it makes sense to other people, you know, that, that transparency and, and ease of that looking at, so when it goes out, it will be that way too. So that is where we're at, with that, and I will let, I will have Mark continue on to the next thing.
Good evening.
Mr. LaFurla, we are about halfway through our presentation.
Good to know.
If you want to grab some popcorn, we're getting close here.
We lost connection, that's what happened to you.
Uh-oh. John, help me. I got a recast.
I know, it's like, I'm done. We just have a couple more slides and we are done.
Okay. All right, good evening, board.
Good evening.
Just to continue on from what Mrs. Smith was sharing, she and I are very, very excited to work with our principals and our schools. Schools are embedding the Return to Learn Plan and their school improvement plans. Back in June, Julie and I facilitated an online virtual retreat with all of the administrators in our school system, and that retreat focused on teaching principals how to teach themselves or to teach online, the same way we're going to ask teachers to do that. So we took our principals, they had to design a lesson, they had to present it to peers, and they had to get feedback on it, because our principals are, we need to support them so they can support teachers when they're working with kids that are, that are learning remotely. We thought that was very, very important to focus on, how can we help teachers? We can't do that unless principals know how to do that work too. So we're very, very excited to do that. This, in addition to that, their professional development plans that the principals are writing with their school improvement teams are going to really focus on supporting teachers with remote learning. There'll be action steps that they study and they learn. At each school, they have learning teams or professional learning communities and ongoing professional development. That will continue regardless of the phase of our return to, our Return to Learn Plan we're in. They will, that will be constant, constantly happening. Our school improvement plans are going to be written to ensure that each student has their social, emotional learning needs met. That's very critical, and I heard that from the board earlier. In addition to that, we're going to ensure that all schools or all students, regardless of being onsite or being remote, are going to learn at high levels every day. That's why we exist. We want to keep kids safe, but we have to make sure that they're continuing to learn at high levels. It's very important to us. Now, I want to talk a little bit about routines. You know, the first day of school, regardless of preschool, kindergarten, all the way to 12th grade, teachers focus on routine, routines. How to, how to get up, Wendy, how do you, what's the procedure for raising your hand, using the restroom, sharpening pencils, all that kind of stuff? Well, they're going to continue to do that, but they're going to focus this year also on our safety measures that we have in place. And you heard Mr. Millmore go on and on about those safety measures. So teachers are going to be really explaining not just how to stay six feet apart from somebody, but why it's important to do that. It's very critical that they don't just know how to do it, but why. And we really want to teach students... And we really want to teach students the why behind things, because they're going to understand why they're wearing a mask. Because I'm going to keep myself safe, I'm going to keep my friends safe, so that my friend's always at school every day. If I don't wear my mask and my friend gets sick, I don't get to see my friend, and I'm not around my friend. So it's going to be very important to teach those kinds of things to kids and reinforce when you see them do it well. It's going to take some time to get there, but we're going to get there. We believe that we can get all kids to do this, if it's appropriate for them. In addition to those routines of being, of just the safety things, we also know that we have to teach routines of, of accessing technology online. When kids are at home, that first day of school, the kids that are in, we're going to have to teach them tomorrow, you're in hybrid, here's how you're going to participate in our classroom, here's what you're going to do. So we're going to have to teach all those routines, all the way from preschool, all the way through 12th grade. We want to make sure that all kids can access the technology so they can learn at their highest level and they can efficiently use it and use it appropriately too. So we have a lot of safeguards in place to keep the, the web and all the bad things away, but we have to ensure that kids know how to access it so they can learn and do the right things. So that's going to be part of those routines that are being taught on day one, reinforced day two, and that's going to be the first couple of weeks of school that we're reinforcing that. So we're very excited for that too. I want to touch on childcare, okay? We've heard from many families that childcare is something that's very important to them. And if we, as we start our, our next step in hybrid, it's going to be important for families to have a childcare option. So I'm very excited to announce that we have worked and then partnered with our Council of Bluff Schools Foundation to offer a full day childcare opportunity for our families. So let me tell you a little bit more about that. So it's going to be run through Kids &amp; Company. It's going to have the same guidelines that we use with Kids &amp; Company now currently. The location that they've secured is the Broadway United Methodist Church, and that's going to be used during hybrid. And if we have to move into full-time remote learning, we'll be able to add a couple of our schools, Bloomer and Longfellow, to access and to provide more space for more kids. So we'll be able to do that. Now, Kids &amp; Company currently, they, they follow all guidelines that we're implementing in our schools. All the safety guidelines, social distancing, masks, frequent, frequent, frequent hand washing, all those things. That'll continue to happen as well. Now, being full day, it starts early in the morning at 6:15 and it goes all the way through 6 o'clock. And Kids &amp; Company will be able to support up to 150 students per day. So that's quite a few, so we're very excited about that. Another thing too about the Kids &amp; Company staff, we are working to support them and train them. So when our students are on their off day, not onsite, but the remote day, and they're taking advantage of this full day daycare, or childcare, the Kids &amp; Company staff will understand how to support kids if they have questions, to ensure that they're staying engaged, learning with their classrooms, looking at the Al camera, and learning as much as they possibly can, just as if they were at home as well. So we're also excited about that. Now, registration is very simple. Go to the, the Council of Bluff Schools Foundation website, click Kids &amp; Company, there's an application right there to get signed up. You can also get to Kids &amp; Company through the Council of Bluff Schools website on the, on the homepage. It's a quick link at the bottom if you scroll down. And since we know hybrid is our method this year, and if you think you're going to need childcare, we do encourage you to sign up now. I talked to the, the team there at Kids &amp; Company, and it's about a two to three day window to get signed up. So if you do think you're going to be needing it this year, it's a good idea to go ahead and get signed up. So we're very excited to be able to partner with the Council of Bluff Schools Foundation and through Kids &amp; Company to provide that opportunity for our families. Very, very excited. So I want to, I want to say one more thing here. So you've heard from our departments tonight, Chris, we're actually towards the end. You've heard, you've heard from all of our departments tonight, and you've learned a great deal about a Return to Learn Plan. And like Mr. Milmore said earlier, things are changing so frequently and so frequently, and all of our teams work together. We sought input from community, from our schools, from our, from our teachers and staff, and really wanted to put the best thing in place for all of our kids, the best plan for all of our kids. So I want to share a quick story. In June, I was, I was facilitating a meeting with principals online and was talking about the plan. And that, back then, the plan was a little bit different than it is now, because it's changed a bit. And one of the principals said to me, she goes, "Well, this isn't the plan, this is our plan." And that just struck me, it's like, yeah, this is our plan. And that's the principal, so excited, this is our plan. And she's like, like cheerleader, let's do this. And so I, I told, Julie and I are so excited to get out there and work with our principals and schools around our plan. One other thing I want to add, during closure and during the summer, we had executive cabinet meetings twice a week. Religiously, twice a week. On, on, on Google Meet. Dr. Murillo's checking in on every one of those little windows, saying hi to us, doing all that stuff. And every single meeting, the, the top of the agenda, it had, it had support for schools. It was all about schools at the beginning of every agenda we ever did. And so regardless of the phase of learning that we're in, schools have always been and will always be at the center of our work. So thank you. And any questions, any further discussion for our team? Got them all here.
I just have a comment. So I, I'm incredibly proud of this district. In a national pandemic with a novel virus, you developed a curriculum and a Return to Learn Plan that meets all needs and allows matriculation without interruption and meets competencies for all students. And all of you.
And I, I just want to thank everyone for not putting a, a plan out, a, a Return to School Plan as early as some of our neighboring district staff. See, it's, I know frustrated some in the community, but every time it was brought up to me, I just said, relax, they're, they're going to make a decision. And, and I, you know, I even said, the other districts will probably change their course before school starts. And I'm, I'm just thankful that we, we held out, and I, I'm confident in the plan that everyone put together.
It's a great point that the district that puts out the plan first revises the plan the most.
So a couple of questions on, I suppose, so you talked about routines and keeping elementary kids engaged while they're at home. You know, I haven't watched that for a few months, you know, different, seeing, watching different families there and, and hosting some things on Saturdays and watching kids. Like, how, how do we keep the academics up, the rigor up with those kids? If they kind of aren't really engaged, then come back a day and they're a little behind. Then they go home and then they're a little behind, is it, is it a conversation with parents? I mean, what does that look like?
Yeah, I think it's a partnership with parents, families always. The beauty of our hybrid plan that we, we put in place, we didn't want kids to be too far away from teachers for too long. And that's why we thought about every other day. So if we have kids with a teacher every other day, they're never away from them more than one time, one, one day. And so if the student is starting to get in some bad habits and sliding away from that engagement on, on their Google Meet and with the teacher, the teacher's got that student onsite the next day to have that conversation. And it's really about teaching, reinforcing, teaching and reinforcing. It's amazing how, what our student, what our teachers do every single day and how they engage kids. And I'm in schools daily, in, in every classroom in our, in our school system at elementary, and I see so much amazing engagement onsite. And I was able to observe several, several Google Meets, we call them Zoom is the generic term, meetings. And, and knowing that we have such a viable curriculum moving forward, kids are going to be way more engaged. And supporting with, with families as well is going to be amazing, so I'm very excited for that.
And our mentors and coaches, do they have a big part in the, those best practices through this? Or are they all going to be trained heavily in?
Absolutely. We're putting together resources for Summer Academy for teachers on really effective strategies to engage, for teachers to use to engage students online. In fact, one of the activities that we did with principals during that virtual retreat back in June, for them to do well on the lesson that they had to write and present in front of us all, criteria was they had to have a very strong engagement piece, and they had to engage, and, and they had to keep people engaged throughout the whole lesson. And if they didn't, they got feedback on it. And so principals were being trained on that, and they're going to really work with teachers, along with mentors, along with instructional coaches that we have throughout the system. That's really what they're going to be dedicated to, to support teachers for this.
We talked about that today, Troy, as we were going through this for a second time. So you can see how engaged my staff is here, seeing it for the third time. But what was really critical is when you saw Mr. Hamilton's presentation, he showed the building level additional support for students that have any social and emotional, and then at the district level. And we began to sit here and talk about the additional support for our teachers at the building level and the additional support that we can push in at the district level when we find there's some areas that we need to support teachers in or our principals. Again, I just have to continue to, to ring the bell of our teachers are going to be at different levels in this. And there's going to be some teachers that are not real comfortable teaching virtually, that we're going to have to support. And then there's going to be some that are going to grab this and fly with it. And, and it's just, it's a new way of doing their craft. And, and so in doing that, we are going to have to have that kind of personalized support. And we are going to have to ensure that we provide that, along with the teacher applying themselves and attending the professional developments and being part of the PLCs and working and asking questions and throwing up that flag when they need some support. But I think what's going to be different is there was never a touch point where that student was face to face. And that's what's, that's what really concerns me about going full remote and not being able, remember how hard I fought for one more day before we closed our schools, because I needed that closure. I need to open in this hybrid because we need to allow our teachers to have that face to face time to build those, those routines about how do we learn virtually? How do we learn when we're not present in a classroom? And then holding the students accountable on the days when they return if they did not connect on that day and they were not engaged on that day, they were not at school. Because we're going to hold them accountable to the learning they missed. We're not going to just teach one day and teach the second day the same thing. We're going to move through that curriculum, and they have to stay committed to, to being involved, to learning, to doing the work, and to being present. And so that's going to be a shift also for our students, because remember, it wasn't that way. We never got the opportunity to get them back face to face in the spring. And so we've got, it's a, it's a big shift that's coming. So again, I'm going to say, we're going to go slow and teach those routines and get those processes and procedures in place before we just say bam, go, and we start teaching. Because if you don't teach it, the kids don't know the expectations. It's kind of like when I come in the classroom, if you don't teach me to hang my coat up and put my things away, I may come in and drop my coat beside my desk and throw my backpack down and sit down and look at you. I've got to be taught what are my expectations, and that's going to be that shift that's occurring. And it's, it's, I, I still worry, because you know, I'm really concerned about the, you know, the three months that we were out and the learning loss that happened during that time, and, and how do we ensure that we make that up? Because our kids deserve that. But I also got to bring the staff along. So we're in a balancing act, and we got to support both ends and help our parents understand this.
So do we feel that, I mean, not only will we provide those supports to the utmost chance we're able, ability we can for teachers, but we'll also have the oversight to watch what's going on on a regular basis to go, yeah, I think they're struggling. Even if they're not raising their hand, I can see there's an issue here.
And Dr. Worthman, there'll be some quick assessments that we will have in place with our curriculum and our curriculum pacing as they go through the standards, where teachers will be checking for understanding. And I know that a lot of people may be concerned about us giving the map assessment when we return in the fall. But I can tell you, it gives us a roadmap. It tells us what learning loss occurred, and it ensures that we've aligned our curriculum maps to meet the needs of the kids and to help bring them along. Because we all know that when Katrina happened and they were out for four months, it took them two years to figure out how to make up that loss. We, we can't let two years go where we don't make up this learning loss. So it's, it's something that we'll work through together.
With that, and on that point though, Dr. Murillo, is there a point though where it's too much throwing? Because I know you wanted, your intent was to do the map as early as possible. Is it too much throwing them at, you know, I'm thinking of the younger, the younger kids, learning to do online, learning to do hybrid, and then being thrown into that map? And where some of the kids are in, are in school doing the map, where the other kids would be at hybrid? You know, is, is there consideration for that?
Well, yes, and, and what we will do is our kindergarten and first grade and second grade, we will start them at a different pace than we will the three through 12, and give us that. And bringing in second grade, and then K and one is, is totally different and looks different then. Because we'll start with them having, and kindergarten especially, they'll just be putting on the headphones and responding, right? First grade, putting on the headphones and responding. So it, we will look at that and we'll walk through it. I'm not going to walk them in the door and put them in front of the computer first day. But I do think that as we get into September, toward the end of September, we've got to know where we are. It's our, how many weeks is it, Corey?
We're tentatively planning to start testing the week of September.
Yeah. And a two weeks, so it'll be about, yeah. And remember, it's adaptive. So as, where the children go, it can become more frustrating as they continue to climb, but it also becomes easier when they begin to struggle, to find where they're at. And without a roadmap, we're just driving. And I would prefer to be very strategic to know where we are. Yeah, so we, we will, we'll work with our principals, and, and my superintendent roundtable always gives me good feedback to meet and talk about that and see where a good sweet spot is. But we do need to see how much learning loss occurred from last year.
We talked about breaks throughout the day for kids. I know we've, we've always pushed our, you seem to shorten, shorten, shorten our outdoor time with our kids more and more, our recess time. Is there any cause to look at that so they're less fidgety during elementary day? I mean, what's that look like?
Yeah, that's a good question. And we're going to continue recess as we've done in the past, and as many movement breaks as we can. And teachers are very great at observing and watching kids when they're getting a little squirrely. And even if they're on a Google Meet and they see that, they can get them up and do some, some movement. But our, our recesses will be planned and there'll be space throughout the day, so we're not mixing a lot of classrooms together. But we'll take those, those breaks, get that fresh air. It's a, it's an opportunity to really get them up and moving and, and get that fresh air.
Snow days are snow days, so no online learning if it's a snow day.
Not according to our governor. Our governor will be requiring us to do remote online learning.
So if you call a snow day, it's transitioned to remote online learning?
That's correct.
It means no June school days later.
Fine with me.
And then choir, band, you know, areas where they say, you know, the person in front of you is the one who gets the worst, you know, the, what are we, how do we handle those?
Dr. Worthman, you want to talk about the plans and the, we, we have, we don't have a finalized plan yet, but Dr. Worthman has been working with Micah to really work through that with all the guidance we're receiving.
Yeah, so really the easy answer is we're going to follow the guidance from the State Music Association. And we're continuing to work through, we've been in contact with our curriculum specialist, who's been engaging with our teachers to make sure that we don't miss things, and we get some feedback from them as well. But the, this, so the, the study that they've used so far is so, so in, in the early stages. And so we, we're, we're going to be cautious, but at the same time, we, we're going to have to get some good data that's going to drive some of that. I think the best place we're in right now is, you know, the hybrid model gives us kind of that ability to have half as many kids and at one time, and we can socially distance them. There may be opportunities to use, what we're thinking about right now is how much of that can happen outdoors in terms of ensemble work, as long as the weather stays nice. We already know that marching band competition has been canceled by the State Music Association. We're waiting for confirmation about show choir, if they're going to follow the same pathway as marching band, which we don't know yet. So we just have to wait and see, and like Dr. Murillo said, the guidance comes out all times of the day and changes every week. And so we just, we try to be nimble and make good decisions about health and safety, so. I know that's not a very good answer, but it's, it's. So I know that's not a very good answer, but it's, it's the truth.
Anything else?
Yeah, what about concerns or how are we going to address those teachers that travel from classroom to classroom or share a classroom or, you know, in the art, art space where kids are sharing the same art materials, the, the safety around that?
Yeah, Dr. Worthman is working right now to place orders. His budget has gone up considerably for how he's going to place those orders. If you want to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so we, we basically doubled the art budgets for, our art typically is the one that is the most critical because it's the one that all of our students take. And it's very consumable intensive. So we've doubled the building art budgets at middle school, elementary and high school. So they have additional dollars to spend on consumable materials and additional shared supplies. Because what we've done is we've used scale, obviously, to be able to provide one set and it gets used by multiple students. So we'll be allowing teachers to buy additional supplies within reason. But we'll also be asking kind of all hands on deck to help sanitize. Because we don't have an unlimited budget to just buy unlimited things. And so when a student finishes with their project and they're done with their paintbrushes, like they do right now, they go to the sink and they clean them out and make sure they're clean. And we'll probably add an additional step to that that says, and you sanitize them before you put them back. Things like that, it's going to be all of us in this together. You know, we're, we will continue to work through additional cleaning so that we've already talked about like elementary schedules. How can we provide, maybe shorten the time a little bit so that teachers have adequate time between two sections, one coming out, another one coming in, to make sure the work surfaces are cleaned? So we'll provide some time for that. And then our, our teachers that travel, we're lucky that they, they travel usually only between two buildings. So it's, they're very few, I believe there's one schedule that has a three. But they're contained. And so the same will be true of our, like our substitute teachers. They travel between buildings and our vendors. So that's why all of these other mitigation efforts are so important. Wearing masks, good hand hygiene, using hand sanitizer, doing screening so that we can keep everybody safe.
And then also, Corey, I'd like to piggyback on that. When we talk about teachers sharing rooms, if they're only at half, if we mark, this is something that the buildings are going to work with, Mark and Julia work with the building administrators. But if there's 22 desk room and you have nine that you set in these nine so that the next class coming in will set in a different one and we can spray those down and let it dry before the next ones come in. But they're clearly going to have to mark them. It's either going to be an X on this one for that. And then you know, if you come in, you're the period that don't sit with the X's and we spray those down. That's why it's so important that we get the spray bottles in every classroom so that we can rotate those through. And that's the best option we have right now for our middle schools and high schools. Now, there may be some that only have a nine in a room and they've got enough to have three transitions before. But right now, that's the best that we know. And so, but we're still continuing to watch to see if anybody's doing it better than that.
Dr. Murillo, this is Chris. I just wanted to, well, first of all, sorry I got so far ahead of myself with the questions.
That's okay.
So I want to echo sentiments from other board members about the, the pride that I feel in this district and the work that you've all done. You know, I also realize, even though you've probably all completed what you feel like is a mountain of work, we are just getting started. And we have to, as a board, you know, continue to, as Dr. Worthman just said, be nimble and collect in new information and respond. So I just want to say how much I appreciate all the work that all of you have done. I'm very proud of our district and proud of all of you. One thing that I do, just kind of one of that, not necessarily a question, just kind of a statement about parents. I know that there are parents that are concerned about remote learning, you know, with their kids, not, especially the young kids not having access to, or parents having to sort of make sure that they're helping their kids in the evenings on, you know, a very shortened timeframe with remote learning. It'll be really important for those parents to have access to tools and resources that assist them with helping their kids complete, you know, a full day's worth of schoolwork in just a few short hours in the evening. That will require a significant partnership with teachers and parents.
I appreciate that. And that's something maybe too, that we can find a way to support them and maybe allow if there is, where the parents are at work and they're with grandma who couldn't help them or somewhere, that we could give them two days to complete that online or to work through the week to get through that. We definitely will do whatever we can to support the families until there's hopefully an answer to this virus, right? Well, yeah, we want a vaccine as soon as possible. Well, Mr. Kazire, that completes our presentation. Thank you all for allowing us to go through that with you.
Very, very much appreciated. And as we begin to reimagine what public education looks like, I know it's been difficult for everybody to, to be patient and to trust. But this is a time that we must be patient and we must trust our leaders, our, our leadership from, from Dr. Murillo and her team and our city officials as, as they help, help guide us through this uncharted territory. And, and one thing that Martha Bruckner used to say a lot was, we've gotten to the point where we need to make the state and make the federal government irrelevant. Because we're doing those things that they haven't even thought about yet. And we're doing it because we care about our students, we care about our staff, we care about our community and we care about our families. So this is a way, I think, that, that we have kicked off this, this initiative to, to make them even more irrelevant in our lives as we can. And, and I, as, as Chris stated, I'm so very proud of, of everybody in our community for being patient and trusting in our leadership that they are keeping us in their thoughts, in their prayers as they deliberate on what this new, new learning environment can be. We together are imagining the, the potential. And, and it's exciting, but it's scary. And with that, I'm so very thankful for all of you, board members, Dr. Murillo, and, and the team of, of individuals and departments that support our staff and our students. We will continue this conversation as we path this way forward. Now we're in a point where we have business to take care of. We have several resolutions before us. And we, the first and foremost is we have a resolution that finalizes the list of graduates for our 2020 graduating class. Is there a resolution before us?
Move to approve the 2020 final list of graduates from Abraham Lincoln and Thomas Jefferson High Schools.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Wilson, before us is a resolution to approve our graduation list. Would you please call the roll?
I have opened up online voting. Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. McLeay?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now is the acceptance of an offer regarding the sale of the PUCI building. Is there a resolution?
I'll move to accept the offer of $75,000 from Triple Play Sports for the sale of the former PUCI elementary building. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Before us is a resolution to approve the, to accept the offer regarding the sale of the former PUCI elementary school, elementary building. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. McLeay?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now, we have a time and a place to set a public hearing for the sale of such, of the PUCI building.
I'll move to set a public hearing on August 25th, 2020 regarding the sale of the PUCI elementary building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Before us, we have a resolution that sets a public hearing for the sale of the former PUCI elementary building. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McLeay?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before we, us now, we have a Wi-Fi expansion agreement. Do we have a resolution?
Yeah, I'll move for the board to approve the amount of $400,000 in COVID-19 CARES Act dollars to be used to fund the completion of the Blink Wi-Fi network for the Longfellow and Rhu areas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say again to John and whoever, and Dr. Murillo and everybody else who was involved in this, this is a huge step for our community. And, and just again, want to say thank you for all the work to get Carter Lake up to speed and all the work that you guys have done this spring and summertime. So thank you very much.
And I, and I also want to make sure that we especially thank our, our city council because they stepped up and provided the dollars for us for the Longfellow phase. And, and we are really appreciative of that. But I also need to thank Pete for his work to find those fundings and to support us in that. And we also had the Kiwi Foundation that donated $100,000 to the Rhu. So it's been a lot of partnership and a lot of people on the other side of the river are really watching what we're doing. In fact, I'm sending John to some meetings to represent us over there to share the good news of what's going on in Council Bluffs. Omaha is very jealous of the work that we've been doing over here. So hats off.
Mr. Fringer started a lot of this.
Yes, Mr., yep, Mr. Fringer, Dr. Bruckner, the whole consortium that's involved. So thank you very much.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Before us, we have an, an agreement to approve the Wi-Fi expansion. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. McLeay?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
And Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now is the resolution to approve our return to learn plan.
Move to approve the return to learn plan as presented with all three phases along with the key components of the return to operations manual.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I guess my only question is, is the addition in the public comment where it gives the authority to Dr. Murillo to proceed with the appropriate phrases? Could you just expand on, on what that, that's entailing?
Yeah, really what that allows us is without board coming together to approve to be in hybrid or board coming together to approve to be in onsite or board coming together to prove remote, that as we, as we look and follow the data and have total communication, of course, with the board, the only way we could go into remote would be to have the governor declare that. So really, we would never, that would never be an action that I would take on my own. What that would allow though is for, as tonight, when I said, my intention is to recommend with the board to make sure that you are all fully aware that starting in hybrid is where we would be. And unless we have a significant turn of, of the curvature, which would drop significantly, any cases over the last 14 days, consideration of being fully back onsite, I just don't see it occurring. I don't. But it does give us this ability not to have special board meetings and call, but me being able to call each one of you one-on-one, being able to commit to emails that I'm sending you that this is where we are and this is where we would move to. If we did have to move into maybe closing of a school building because of an outbreak, that would be something that we would have to have the approval of the Department of Education. It would not be something we could make here locally. The governor's proclamation took that away from local control. So we would have to go to the DE and to the State Department of Health to be able to make that move. And I would not recommend that unless the full board was behind us recommending that to the DE and that would be a process that we would all be a part of. So really, as we state, moving back and forth, it's really, we're in hybrid and then as we look together, where we would go from there.
Okay, so it would just be moving from one phase to another phase?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But it also gives you the, the authority to close down individual classrooms without having to come to the board for an approval. So I think that's important that, that gives Dr. Murillo and her team the flexibility to, to act appropriately quickly.
Right, and not have to wait for all of us, yep.
And right.
Yep.
So that was the reasoning for that addition in there is it gives Dr. Murillo the flexibility to, to move between the phases.
And just like a snow day, Ms. Shudek, I will notify you all before I make a call to the media and notify our parents. You are all notified first before anything that would be, that would change.
I do, just because I haven't said this, but I do appreciate everybody's time and effort and, you know, it's, it's been said many, many, many times tonight, but it, it's a hefty, hefty plan. So I do appreciate that. I guess the only thing that I would like to see is just that masks be mandated and not strongly recommended or encouraged or, or the language that's in there, but that it is mandated. But otherwise, I think it's a great plan.
And I think it gives us the flexibility as well to be able to, to move and.
And, and you have my, my word that I will work with the administrators. And if we see that before school opens, we feel we need to make that pivot, we will. Or after school opens, if we see we can't build that community to bring it to the board to make that commitment.
Okay, thank you.
We will monitor it.
There's no further discussion. Before us now is the resolution to, to approve the return to learn plan. Our return to learn plan.
There you go.
Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. McLeay?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and a resolution has been approved. Before us now is an item to amend the Board of Directors' meeting calendar. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I can move that the Board of Education meeting calendar add Tuesday, August 11th as an additional board meeting date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Is there a work session before that? I just want to get it on my calendar.
I, I wanted to get it on the calendar. I felt it was critical to add a meeting with.
Sure.
If you don't know, that's okay. Yeah. We haven't, usually the board officers set the agenda and decide on a workshop and we haven't met yet.
We haven't been there yet.
Okay.
That's fine.
If there's no further discussion, before us now is a resolution to amend the board meeting calendar. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. McLeay?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Kazire?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now, we have a resolution that will approve our 2021 legislative priorities. We had an opportunity to review our previous priorities as well as list an item that we feel is a priority in addition. So at this time, if there is a resolution to approve our list of four, typically we, we put together four, but if there is an, if there is a. we put together four, but if there's an, if there's a resolution that would include four, that we would accept that. And at this time, is there a resolution?
I see five on here, is that...
Yeah, there's five.
The last two we put for you guys to select from. These were two that...
And one of the following?
Yes.
Okay, so make the resolution and have discussion about which two?
Sure.
Okay. Move the, approve the following 2021 legislative priorities. Protection of school funding for public schools, timely equitable and adequate school funding. Funding to provide mental health supports for students. And then one of the following, full funding for universal statewide voluntary preschool and local accountability and decision making.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I think you need to include both of them because in the world of COVID that we're in right now, we need to have local accountability and decision making. So, I think you need to have all five of them.
Okay. Is there...
I would agree with Jill.
I'm on board with that.
All right. Short and sweet, we'll move forward with, with the, with the approval of the resolution before us is the, to accept all five items listed in our legislative priorities. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now is contract regarding substitute teacher services. Is there a resolution?
I move the board approve the contract and services of teachers on call, accompanied by specialized in staffing substitute teachers and parent educators.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Is this for one year or is this ongoing?
This is for one year. Okay, Mr. Mil, yeah, and if you have questions, Mr. Milborn can answer if we have any additional ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Milborn.
I'll let you go first, Pat.
It is for one year.
Yeah, it's one year.
So, it is for one year, okay. And then, okay, so first, I know I looked over the stuff, but do they still, does this company then require that they get the certification through the state of Iowa, just like we would normally require, right? Okay, that's not changing that.
No, so they still either need a sub-license or authorization.
Okay.
And, and we have had, the governor did make some different...
Yes, she, the proclamation loosened up the, the BOE requirements to open up the subpool, so there is an opportunity here to recruit more substitutes.
And, just generally, what is like loosened up on that? That's what I'm, yeah.
So, it was a, it was a bachelor's degree and now it's an associate's degree. There was some age requirements there. It was 21, now it's 20. And then there, in lieu of a associate's degree, there's so many hours that a substitute can have, the college credit hours, and they apply. And the, the Board of Educat, Educational Examiners vet all of those applications. And, I'm sorry, they also lifted, if you had authorization, you could only, you couldn't sub more than a certain amount of days.
Yeah.
And they lifted that. And you couldn't be in assignment more than 10 days and they lifted that restriction as well.
And are those just temporary lifts or is that a new change to that?
Right now, it's just temporary.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just based on her temporary proclamation.
So, does this contract then, so can they use the, the lower restrictions or the guidelines?
Yep, so they, basically they follow anything, obviously they follow the state regulations, but then they follow any additional regulations that we ask of them as well.
And then Gary, does that proclamation go through the school year or does that end in like December? Some, they're all staggered for all the different proclamations, so I just, I mean, it's just, I don't know that we would want to kick people off at the semester mark and lose half of a pool.
Right now, it's what she's, unless she comes out and takes it away, it'll be for this year. She comes out and restates.
So, do our existing subs all go to the staffing company?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or if they want to?
Yes.
Yep, so they would just, they would just transition over, so we'll, we'll reach out to them and we'll give teachers on call their names. Teacher on call will reach out to them, they'll have to fill out some paperwork and they'll transition over. The only way they wouldn't transition if there was a licensing issue or they have to do a background check, so if something came up in a background check, it's a, it's a fairly smooth transition.
Okay. Have we answered all the questions?
And then I guess, is there, is the pay rate the same for those just...
It is, yep.
Across the board, okay.
So, we will set the pay rate.
Okay. If there are no further questions, before us we have a resolution to approve the substitute teacher contracting services, teachers on call. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. For us now, we have a list of first reading of our policies. Do we have a resolution?
This is policy Title IX.
This is for sexual, Title IX. Move to approve policy 125, discrimination harassment based on sex prohibited. Policy 405, harassment in the workplace. Policy 513, anti-bullying harassment involving students. Policies 405 and 513 have been updated for clarity upon the recent advisement of legal counsel.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, did they take the policy 405, pull it out and put that information in 105?
You're right. Who did that?
Tell that information to that winner.
Emily. They're, they're still there, they're just updating. Yeah. Because Title IX had a whole bunch of changes, so we added.
That's correct. Title IX had, I'll quote, quote Dr. Ogres, "A whole bunch of changes."
A whole bunch of changes.
And so, we were required to create some policy around Title IX that include training for staff. I think we included the, the manual in your board docs. I hope we did. So, we just wanted to make sure that we have the new policy and then the, the other policies that kind of had some wording around that reflected that we had the new policy.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, before us now, we have a resolution to approve of the first reading, our policies related to changes to the Title IX legislation. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Shudek?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Kozier?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Before us now, we have a list of our consent agenda, which include business items that approve teaching strategies, gold preschool assessment contract, the purchase of our student masks, 750 no-touch towel dispensers, special education contracts, as well as personnel actions, claims and accounts. Is there a resolution?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, before us is a resolution to approve our consent agenda. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?[1764.16]